Barb's gone again.
What in the world?
We're good to go. Good morning. Let me call the meeting to order for the ditch board, the joint ditch board meeting for Scott County, Minnesota. This would be ditch number 10, I believe, that this board is key meeting for, although I think Cindy will correct me here in a minute. Members, we have in front of us the minutes from the August 24, 2022 meeting, which is the last time we were together. What's your pleasure on this?
Chair, I'll move the approval.
Second.
Minutes and a second. Discussion, hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails. The minutes of the August 24 meeting are adopted. There was a consent agenda item. This first one, 3.1, I believe, is going to be withdrawn for a future meeting. So the consent agenda, we will withdraw and not act on Resolution 2022-246. We'll save that for the next time we get together. 3.2 on the consent agenda is to prove the county records of drainage ditch expenditures for the Scott County drainage ditches for 2022. That is the motion, or that's the consent agenda. I suppose we could just adopt it and do this as fast, but who wants to move the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I will approve of that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that. County records of drainage ditch expenditures for Scott County drainage ditch ditches for 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second to the Commissioner Wolf's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Ulrich. Further discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails. The consent agenda is adopted. Non-consent agendas, item number 4.1, we're going to have a discussion about Resolution 251, authorizing maintenance lanes. I'm looking to staff. Here we go. Chris. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the ditch board. You're in early.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Very early.
To go back, a couple of things. This is a meeting of the Scott County Ditch Board, the Joint Ditch Board, actually with Lissour County will be meeting on November 1. So this is the--
This is Scott County Ditch Board. Thank you, Chris, for clarifying that.
And the expenditures that you've approved consist of all of the Scott County ditches, not just ditch 10. And what we're going to talk about now is going to be ditch 10 and ditch 13.
Okay. Chris, just for the fun of it, how many ditches do we, are we responsible for as a Scott County board?
Um--
If there's a 10 and a 13, can we assume there's numbers 1 through something?
No. There's 2, 5, 6, 8, 10, 12, and 13 as the Scott County Ditch Board. And then as the Joint, the Sauer Scott County Board, you have Joint Ditch 1, Joint Ditch 3, which just recently became Joint Ditch 3. That used to be just a Scott County ditch, but through the redetermination of benefits, they found benefited owners in Lissour County. So that became, and then there's also Joint Ditch 4. So those three will be met on, on November 1.
Good. Thank you for--
Yes.
--the background on that.
And just to go back to, for the, for the audience that's online, to the 3.1, adopting the resolution, we initially had set a public hearing to talk about the repair proceedings on, on County Ditch 10. We had a landowner meeting previously. The meeting was not well attended, mostly, I think, because of timing. A lot of the farmers are still in the fields.
Oh, yeah.
In addition to that, of the people that were in the audience, we received feedback that the presentation that was given was not specific. They didn't feel that they were informed well enough to ask the questions that needed to be asked in order to provide you valuable feedback to help you make your decision on which repairs are needed. So we had a discussion with our drainage attorney, and we had previously thought that we were under a timeline as far as holding that public hearing, and he indicated that we didn't meet the threshold that requires that timeline. So he was very excited that we have decided to hold an additional meeting, which is, which is scheduled for December at the SWCD offices, which will have staff from SWCD, who is the contracted ditch inspector, as well as ISG, who prepared the repair report, to better inform the landowners. It's going to be more of a facilitating conversation than a presentation, to allow them to come in, get specifics, ask questions, be able for them to then think about things, and come to the public hearing, which will be scheduled either in January or February of next year, to provide that feedback that I know the board is looking for in order to help make that decision on which repairs are needed.
Good. Thank you.
So that's why we--
Where the SWCD offices are.
What's that?
Remind the public where the SWCD offices are.
And Jordan?
Scott County Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, okay.
At the Scott County Fairgrounds.
So it's much more centrally located than here.
Yes.
Boardhouse. Good, good move. Thank you.
Previous to the landowner meeting, we had been having meetings about Joint Ditch 3 and County Ditch 10 in Belle Plaine, and we had some issues with Zoom microphones and, and things such as that, where it wasn't allowing the audience that was zooming in to hear. And there were just some technical issues that were, we experienced a couple of different times. So that's why we moved them to the county boardroom. But yes, the SWCD office is much more centrally located for the landowners. And the, with SWCD being the ditch inspector, they will have information, valuable information for the landowners also, as they're asking questions.
Thank you.
Yes. So moving on to the request for assessment liens, we are looking at having liens on two of the county ditches. County ditch 10, I'll just kind of go through what's happened. We had a previous lien that was approved in 2020, so it started, if the lien was not a prior to the end of the year, they were, it was placed on their property taxes starting in 2021, and that amount was $45,000. The fund balance as of year end 2021 was in the negative, $83,000. So the reason for this is because as part of, there was a complaint filed on County Ditch 10, which caused everything that's kind of going on now with the repair report. The first step in that was to do the redetermination of benefits on County Ditch 10. And then now we're into the process of the repair report being, being generated. And so a lot of those costs had to do with those, those two activities happening. There are proposed expenditures on that ditch of just short of $26,000 for next year, and those expenditures would include any annual and recurring maintenance. And then there's a contingency reserve that's built in there in case, as the repair is happening, anything that was unknown in the beginning comes up that needs to be repaired, and then for inspection services and legal fees.
Chris, would you take a pause or a moment? It looks like Corey Brophy has his hand up on the Zoom meeting. Is that a question we need to ask?
Yeah. Well, I apologize. Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
All right. So I don't have much time that I can attend the call for, so I'll just kind of cut to it. So I, I have received letters in the mail, so I do have a couple of questions. And again, I apologize for speaking out of turn. So one of the letters said that I could be awarded damages in the amount of $3,100 and change with tax, W9, that kind of stuff included. Or I could let that kind of idle and it would go back in. I've, I've been raising concerns about the crossing on my property since 2017 with Brian Wormer, but it looks like he's since moved on. And he, he pretty much told me there is nothing they would do or could do. I guess with that, if I do not elect to take in this $3,100, am I still liable to kind of pay for any kind of repairs on this lien to, to this, this ditch?
Chris, do you understand the question?
Yes. The answer to the question would be yes. Corey, if you are determined by the viewers during the redetermination of benefits process to be a benefited owner along that ditch, then you are responsible for your portion of the, any fees or any costs that occur along that ditch.
Yep. Okay. So, I mean, and are, are you, are you Chris Leage, Leage?
Yes, log in.
Right? Okay. And, and we can take it offline as well, Chris, you know. And I do have some of my correspondence with Brian. I mean, that's kind of a problem for me as a landowner, as I've been in touch with, you know, like I said, Brian, before. And I mean, he told me flat out that they oversized the crossing on the road, which that are in turn pretty much destroyed the crossing on my property. I mean, that's kind of a hard liability for, for me to accept. I mean, being fully admitted from a representative that the process was wrong. Does that, I mean, does that seem out of line to anybody?
Well, I have a process question as the chairman, Corey. So hold on just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Is this a question that needs to be dealt with today? Can this be handled offline? Is this related to what we're trying to do this morning? It is. I'm getting, oh, it's not. Oh, Cindy is saying it's not related to what we're trying to do this morning.
Okay, I apologize.
Cindy Geis, if she'd come and address your issue, because you brought up a couple of names of staff that I think we need to hear about. Cindy, if you could.
Commissioners, Mr. Brophy, this is Cindy Geis, and I'm the county auditor. And Chris reports up through me, and so ultimately her and I work a little bit collectively, but she's much smarter than I am when it comes to county ditches. I will tell you that your question on the crossing is probably going to be addressed in the repair report in some fashion. I would highly recommend, if possible, that the questions be passed on, and, and, and I can, we can get them to give you your information. But we have our ditch inspectors here who are working heavily with ISG, and anything having to do with crossings, or culverts, or issues on ditch 10 really should be addressed throughout the repair proceedings, which that's not the purpose of this meeting today. This meeting is just to kind of say, okay, we did the redetermination. We have some bills, both from ISG and from our pers, our, who is the engineer who did the repair report. And then as well, we have H2 overviewers who did the redetermination. So those bills are what we're discussing here today. But your comment and your concern is very valid, and I know that our ditch inspector, SWCD, we have both of them here today. They would like to hear from you further on this issue so that they can make sure your concern is addressed when they have their landowner meeting, and/or if you can't attend that, that they get the information and ask the question to the engineer who did the repair report. And that will be discussed further in some further proceedings with, with this board.
Mr. Brophy, does that help address your concerns?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll drop some, my name and address here in, in the chat. I do have to take off. I do have Chris, I do have the letter from you with your phone number and whatnot. And like I said, my, my info's in there. I, I appreciate your time and, and, yeah, we'll, we'll find a resolution. And I apologize for speaking out of turn and not, not falling the right forum, but I'm sure we'll all be in touch shortly.
Chris, Corey, apologies not necessary. Thank you for staying in order and addressing your questions. I hope we got you the information we needed, or you needed, and so we're aware of, aware of your situation, can be advised of it when it comes up again in a future meeting. Before we proceed, though, just for the sake of the board here, who, who are the ditch inspectors? Cindy, would you just raise your hands quickly? There's a couple of you here. Okay. And the gentleman in the front row here are then are, they work with us too? Or are they, you guys landowners?
Landowner.
Landowner?
I'm the former county ditch inspector.
Okay, good. So you have, you guys have some history, and we got one landowner here and a couple online, I see. Okay, good. Thank you for the interlude and for addressing Mr. Brophy's questions. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to continue on County Ditch 10, the expenditures for 2022 so far have been $172,809.69. And they are comprised of some of the things that I mentioned previously. So on County Ditch 10, we are looking to place a lien in the amount of $280,000 to cover, to bring us back to a positive balance, and then to have some maintenance funds in there for the, for the coming years. County ditch 13, we previously leaned them, it was approved in 2021 for $46,000. Normally, based on his, the history of that lien, those funds would have lasted about three years. However, we have received a complaint on County Ditch 13. One of the landowners had some sloughing issues. Apparently, the ditch was cleaned out about 10 years ago, and now the bank blew out where his tiles are. And so they are asking for a minor, what's considered a minor repair on that ditch. So in order to complete that repair, we need to go back and ask for additional funds from the landowners. The fund balance as of 2021 year end was just over $19,000. The proposed expenditures for, for next year are $54,690. That includes about $40,000 to address the complaint. There'll be about 4,000 linear feet that will be cleaned out, and then approximately four side inlets will be installed in order to repair the washed out areas. So on that, on County Ditch 13, we are also ask, we are asking again for a $46,000 lien. And each year, at the end of the year, beginning of the next year, we do send out a listing of all of the expenses that occur on each of the ditches to the benefited landowners. And we will be doing that again usually around the February timeframe. And it will also talk about any planned expenditures for the coming years, and if we foresee needing to come for any maintenance liens on any of their ditches.
Okay.
With that, I'll stand for questions.
So you're asking for two, authority for two liens this morning, one for $280,000 on ditch 10, one for $46,000 on ditch 13?
Correct.
That'll be due and payable by the landowners next year?
If, if they are approved today, individual letters will go out to the landowners telling them the amount that is due specifically to them on their parcels. They will have until the end of this year to pay that, just the amount that's due, without it going on their property taxes and no interest. If they choose not to do that, or choose to pay only a portion of it, the remainder would go on to their property taxes with interest. And I believe ditch 10 is a 20-year lien, and ditch 13 would be a 15-year lien.
So they can be spread out over time if the landowner needs to do that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
And Mr. Chair, what is it?
Well, turn your mic on, Tom.
And Chris, what is it, about 6% or 8% interest, or how much would that be on that? Is it--
6%, 6% interest.
Okay.
Yes.
Further questions for Chris? We understand, do we overstand the resolution that we're being asked to adopt this morning? Ditches 10, ditches 13, they're entirely our responsibility? Mr. Ulrich, you have your green light on. Does that mean you wish to ask a question or make a motion?
No.
Oh. That was kind of a request in that question, Commissioner Ulrich. All right. Commissioner Brecky?
Mr. Chair--
Ready to do the heavy lifting?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-251, authorizing maintenance liens on Scott County ditches numbers 10 and 13 for the purpose of retaining positive fund balances for maintenance needs.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there further discussion to this resolution? Do I think we completely understand what we're doing here? Good deal.
Do you want to ask if there's comments from the, I see Derek Schultz.
Yep. Okay. You know, it isn't a public hearing, but I suppose we could extend the courtesy that if there's other comments from the landowners or anything at this time, this would be a good time to speak up, as I think we're about to pass the motion. Sir, if you would approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then your question or your observation would be great.
My name's Josh Smith. I'm off Langford Way in Lydia off ditch 13. I'm just, I'm just wondering, what all impact will that have? Do they clear the whole ditch, or is that something that, I don't know, it's just, it's like, like I heard when I first got here, it's all like, we haven't heard much of what, what's all going on, but yet we're asked to pay a whole, pay for it. So, so it's just concerning to me.
All right. Well, if you want to have a seat, well, let's, let somebody explain what's going to happen with the, with the ditch and the money, and how that's all, how, how they clean out a piece of benefits, everybody. Good morning. For the record, would you state your name for it and remind us who you are, too?
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joe Hale. I'm the ditch inspector for Scott County. To address Mr. Smith's question, the particular project that we're discussing this morning will just be one segment of the ditch. This will be from Swamp Lake, running east about 4,000 feet. So that's for this particular project. But going forward into next year, I plan to do an entire spec, inspection on ditch 13, to look at the, you know, the state of it, and what maintenance needs are out there, and come up with a plan for any, any maintenance going forward for that ditch. So we'll do a comprehensive inspection, note where the repairs need to take place, and address as needed.
So even though that ditch is useless to me, it's still my responsibility to maintain it for everyone else?
Well, if you're a benefitter, you, you are required to pay expenses for the ditch.
The, the public probably didn't pick up the question. The landowner asked if, even though this repair isn't on his property and doesn't directly benefit him, does that, does he still responsible? Mr. Hale, your answer?
Yeah, all the benefiting properties pay based on their percentage of benefit.
What, what's benefit?
The question, okay, this is why we usually do this in a public hearing, but there are people that are recording this that can't hear your question when you ask that. So I'm going to repeat it. And what's the benefit is the question, which gets into the whole business of ditch law, and who wins and who, who perceives it doesn't. But Joe, do you want to take a crack at that?
Yeah, the benefit is basically a measure of the increase in property that the ditch creates for your land. So without the ditch, some lands wouldn't be as productive agriculturally. So they look at what the land would look like without the ditch, and the increase in production based on the, the ditch existing. So they come with, up with a benefit, and it's based on how many acres you have. And so it's basically your percentage of that benefit.
It's a complicated engineering study that takes into account drainage and how productive the soil is. And, and the assumption is if the ditch wasn't there, would you still be trying to farm in a swamp then? And does the ditch make it productive farmland, et cetera, et cetera? By the way, just politically, could you imagine trying to build a ditch system today? It would not happen, would it?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Cindy Geis again. I will tell you that, you know, outside of Scott County, in some of those more rural areas, down along the southern border, along the western border, you'd be amazed how many petitions for ditches still occur. But because that's their entire livelihood, and they're farming 2,000, 3,000 acres out there. So for them, a drainage system is extremely beneficial. As you become more urbanized, that's where some of our landowners are saying, wait a second, I'm being charged for a ditch, but I don't even farm. I don't have any productive acres. What the benefit, what the viewers look like when they establish benefits, though, is not just, do you yourself have productive acreage? But does any of your water drain toward or into the ditch? If any component of that, in a topography way, has your water drain, then they may not look, charge you for, for how many acres you currently have, what are your soils, and all these different grades. They will just say, you as an owner, particularly through the Lydia area, there's a lot of that little town that they don't really farm, but yet their water drains into the ditch. So they're still adding capacity, and they're still have some level of benefit. So I just wanted to clarify that it's not even only just agricultural production, but if your water drains at all toward that area, and if they can, the only way that, to say, I just don't think that I do, was, would, would be to order another redetermination, which we all know can be extremely expensive, but--
And on this particular ditch, when was the last time we did a redetermination? Has it been decades or years, or--
Well, I will, I can't really tell you when the last time it's been redetermination. I don't have that information at my fingertips. I will tell you, though, that it hasn't been since I've been here. And not that I'm that old, but I've been here since 93, and I don't rem, it hasn't, we haven't redetermined any of the ditches until we just did now this, ditches 3 and 10. And we do know that our joint ditches, our Joint Ditch 1 with Lissour County, has been redetermined just in the last year or so as well. So it's been a while since any of the other ditches have been redetermined.
Okay. One last question for either you or Chris, then. It might be helpful. For determining the expenses or the proposed expenses over the next few years, that for the, the reason we're having these liens discussed this morning, what is the public process for doing that? Do we just do that in a back office and you bring it to the board, or is there a public process where landowners can weigh in or something like that?
I, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'm not entirely following. You mean, would we extend the lien?
Yeah.
So we have a lien statement today that actually breaks down each percentage of benefits, since it's in like an Excel spreadsheet, and soon it'll be within the actual system itself or ditch system. But that formula just doesn't change.
So from whenever we did the redetermination last time, we're still using the same formula? So there's no changing, okay.
So now that we know, like, ditch 10 was just redetermined, and ditch joint, ditch 3, which is now a joint ditch, was just redetermined, we'll use those new percentages. And with the, when that happened with those two ditches, those properties brought in and out of the ditch as well. So changes did occur, but the only time changes can occur is when we go through that formal proceeding.
That's what I, wanted the public to understand. There is, there is a formal process for creating that redetermination, which assigns the value, the impact, and all that. And that's when that happens, during the redetermination.
Mr. Chair, you are correct.
Thank you, Cindy. That's very helpful.
Mr. Chair.
JJ, good morning.
Good morning. Derek Schultz of Belle Plaine has a question online.
Okay. Mr. Schultz, thank you. I don't see you on my screen, but I'm glad JJ called it out. So, oh, here. I don't see a hand up. I guess that's what I'm, Mr. Schultz, go ahead. You're on. You need to unmute your microphone. I'm sorry. It looks like your mic is muted.
I can read it. He, he put it in chat.
How's that?
There you are. Now we can hear you. Mr. Schultz, good morning. Welcome to the board ditch meeting. Good morning. Go ahead.
Okay, I was wondering, does ditch 10 terminate at some point, or does it continue into another numbered ditch system?
Chris, did you hear the, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Does it terminate at some point, or does it--
Just a minute, Mr. Schultz. We'll get you that answer.
Yep. Thank you, Derek. According to the ditch inspector, ditch 10 goes into Ravens Creek. Stream.
Okay, so then it's not like ditch 3 that, ditch 3, so when did ditch 3 get connected to ditch 10?
We understand the question. Just a sec, they're trying to determine when that was.
According to the previous ditch inspector, it's always been connected since it was established.
Okay, so then are there any other ditches that are connected to ditch 3?
No.
Did you get that?
Okay, so then that's a unique situation where number 3 is connected to ditch 10?
Yes, that is a unique situation. Ditch 3 actually drains into ditch 10. There's an outlet into ditch 10.
And we've done a redetermination on ditch 3?
Yes.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further discussion to the motion that we have in front of us. Commissioner Brecky?
I'm just ready to vote.
Are you ready to vote? Okay. I think we're fully informed and ready to vote. As many as are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails. Resolution 251 is adopted. Thank you. That was quite educational this morning. Last motion is the motion to adjourn. Let's make it formal. I'll entertain a motion.
Removed.
Commissioner Wolf?
Second.
And Commissioner Ulrich. Discussion, hearing none. Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails. Ditch board meeting for October 18th is adjourned. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Scott County Board of Commissioners. This is our regular meeting for October 18, 2022. I'm going to ask you to rise with me for just a moment of silent reflection before we pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. for all. Please be seated. Members, we had the agenda sent to us in our packets and posted online. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I see none. Let's let the agenda stand as it's been published. Number three is the minutes for October fourth. Now, those minutes were not in the electronic packet, but were distributed to us yesterday. Someone who read them carefully here to make any motions or corrections regarding those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I did read them and I did make a tiny correction. I will approve them or motion to approve them as set up.
Motion to approve, and I think the correction you're talking about was a typo.
Just a typo.
Yeah, just make sure JJ knows where it was. We're good.
And I'll second that motion and I made sure to take Commissioner Beer off of three events that he did not attend in my corrections.
One of them looked really funny. You might have to try.
Otherwise, I second the motion. So approving them as, as corrected.
As corrected.
They're in spirit.
Those are the corrections we've noted. It's always fun to get called out in a board meeting, isn't it, Commissioner Beer?
Pretty sure I was there.
All right, further discussion? I don't hear any. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the motion prevails. The minutes as amended and corrected are adopted. Thank you, JJ. Point number four on the agenda is the moment when we open the floor to interested citizens who wish to address the board or call something to our attention that's not on the agenda for later today. In so doing, you'll have up to five minutes to speak about that. Generally, we don't field questions or do a back and forth. We just hear your comments and direct it to staff. I see nobody in the audience approaching the microphone. And is there anyone on Zoom? Looking to my left, I see nobody on Zoom as well. So we'll move to point number five on the agenda. By point one, I can receive a COVID update. I think our friend Lisa, hey, there you are, Lisa. Good morning.
Yeah.
And thank you for the hard crappy update too, so we can see that in person.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner Beer and commissioners. Thanks for inviting me again to do a COVID update. We continue to do these monthly and hopefully in the near future, we won't be required to do these anymore because COVID will be gone. But for now, it is not. Okay, next slide, sorry. So this is the case rate since the beginning of twenty nineteen. We are currently, we have had almost forty-six thousand Scott County residents test positive for COVID, so confirmed positive cases. These do not include any home tests and we know there are thousands of home tests done regularly. We had ninety-nine cases last week, confirmed cases. We are in low number or low severity, but high transmission. So with the new Omicron, we've talked about before, symptoms are milder, highly infectious, but we're not seeing a ton of hospitalization. Hospitalization has gone down just a little bit in the past month, but we still see people being hospitalized. We still see deaths, thankfully. We have had two hundred and seventy-four deaths in total. We had no deaths last week and I believe the week before.
Lisa, over the course of this thing, we've heard things like Delta and BA five and all this and that. What variant are we on right now, if you happen to have that?
I believe we are on Omicron still.
They're still calling, Omicron is a name for one of the variants. Oh, okay.
And there's, I think we're on two A. Next slide, please. We'll talk a little bit about where we're at with vaccinations. This is the vaccination rate by age. The light blue bar represents people, percent of individuals with at least one dose. And I have both Scott County and the entire state here. We are doing about the same as the state. The dark blue bar is people with, have completed a vaccination series. And then the green is percent of those that are up to date with vaccinations. And I have a definition on the next page, but that does include the booster. So when we're looking at, sorry, not yet. Can you go back one? Okay, that's okay. No worries. So as you can see, the people that, you know, the seniors that we are most worried about, they're fairly well vaccinated up until the booster. So we have very low rates of people that are, would be considered fully vaccinated. And now you can go to the next slide, please, JJ. Thank you. So again, this is compared to the state. We have about seventy-five percent of our Scott County population has at least one dose. About seventy-one percent has completed the initial series. And then to be considered up to date with vaccinations, you can see the definitions on the slide for those, for adults over age twelve, that means has completed the series, but has also had a bivalent booster. And we are very, very low there, four point seven percent for those bivalent boosters.
And yet our daily rate is down to ninety-nine a week?
Confirmed cases, correct.
Interesting, okay.
Next slide. Want to talk a little bit about long COVID? There were some questions last week, and I do have Dr. Wilcox on the phone as well in case he has some additional comments. COVID affects quite a few areas of the body. We talked about this last time too, neurological, cardiovascular, gastrointestinal. We are exceeding quite a bit of long COVID, what would be considered long COVID, which is any symptom that's lasting three or more months after first getting the virus, that they did not have previously. So we're looking at about seven and a half percent of the population experiencing these long COVID symptoms. And those that are older, older adults are actually less likely to have long COVID than younger adults. So we're looking at that working age group between about fifty-five and sixty-five, fifty to sixty-five are more likely to be experiencing long COVID than an eighty-year-old. Women from the initial, this is initial data, women are more likely than men to experience long COVID. And we do know that being fully vaccinated not only reduces your chances of COVID, but also of getting long COVID. Next slide. So some of the symptoms most commonly reported, a long lengthy cough lasting three, four months. One of the most common symptoms has been this brain fog that people keep talking about, some confusion, inability to focus and concentrate, sore throat. I personally, we hear a lot at the clinic. I know someone who was in the other day that says they haven't been able to taste anything and it's been a year, actually a year out since they've had COVID. So we're looking at about sixteen million, approximately sixteen million working-aged Americans, those ages eighteen to sixty-five have been, have stated that they have experienced symptoms of long COVID. This data was from August. And this is impacting their ability to work. So we have about four million people that are estimated back in August to be out of work due to symptoms of long COVID. And the estimates from this article I read yesterday, it's about fifteen percent of a labor shortage is being attributed to people who are experiencing these long COVID symptoms. Next slide. Pretty much that's all I had. I just let you know we are continuing to do vaccinations. We have a Wednesday clinic where we are, we have a variety of boosters, the bivalent Pfizer and Moderna. We have regular vaccinations for, for COVID. We will continue to offer those clinics at least until the end of December. And then we'll take another look at it to see if it's time to turn it over to the healthcare and the pharmacies. Right now, they're still able to, they're able to keep up, but we are serving the population that has no insurance. So we'll continue to do so at least through the end of the year and then maybe we'll embed it with our other clinics. But we still have vaccines that are widely available. We highly recommend you get your COVID vaccine. Dr. Wilcox, did you have anything to add?
No, Lisa, I think you handled, handled it beautifully. The big issue now is the long COVID issues that seem to be surfacing and you covered very nicely, I think, the various areas that long COVID can lead to medically for some of our young population. Nicely put together.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Dr. Wilcox. Any other questions or comments for Lisa? It's nice to see that weekly number down to a hundred or less. That's pretty good.
You know, I do have.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Question. You know, maybe Dr. Wilcox can say something about this. How common would it be for someone to have long COVID, but they didn't realize they ever had COVID? Is that, would that be a rare or is that a fairly common possibility?
That's a great question, Commissioner. And the thought is, you can have very mild symptoms acutely of COVID. And a lot of our younger people actually had not terrific symptoms initially with the acute illness, but the long-term effect really is problematic. And they are the ones now that are really contending with symptoms of the long COVID type of clinical picture. So you could have a mild acute illness and end up with significant long-term problems from COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, questions or comments? I just, thank you, Lisa, for your report and for keeping us up to date on how things are going. Dr. Wilcox, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet. Have a good day, folks.
All righty. Let's bring us to our monthly Scott County Delivers topic. This month, under six point one on the agenda will be child protection. And Ms. Harder, I see you have quite a group here to talk to us this morning. We're looking forward to the presentation. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I'm looking forward to this conversation as well. This is.
A work group that is highly impacted by this board's ongoing commitment to making sure that kids are safe and well and thriving. And, and you reflect that in all kinds of ways as you make decisions about, about our strategic plan and our results maps. And so today, this is a, this is a piece of work that I know that you are familiar with. We have a really talented group of people here to share some of their experiences with you. I, I want to tell you, just because there's quite a lot of data in this packet, that it kind of walks through the process that a family would go through in child protection. So the first sets of data you're going to look at is, what, what do we know about reports to child protection? Then what do we know about assessments? Then what do we know about cases and placement? And then the very last few slides are an update on our prevention work. And, and some of these folks are going to talk about how child protection and those prevention programs kind of intersect. And so with that, I will ask the folks on our facilitator group to introduce themselves. Then I'll ask each person on the panel to introduce yourself and what your role is in the child welfare system. And then we're going to jump in.
Good morning, I'm Kate Zabliczek. I'm the Environmental Services Manager.
Good morning, I'm Chris Loggy. I work in Community Services.
Barb Dahl, Social Services Director.
I'm Nikki Halberg, Prevention Supervisor.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Lindstedt. I am the Guardian at Lightroom Coordinator. So I'm the supervisor for the Guardian at Lightroom program in the first district.
Good morning, I'm Julie Swanson. I'm one of the Child Protection Supervisors. I supervise assessment workers and case managers.
Good morning, Trish Mashky. I'm also one of the Child Protection Supervisors and I supervise assessors and case managers as well.
Morning, I'm Deb Simonsen. I'm one of two child protection attorneys at the county attorney's office.
Good morning, I'm Cheryl Marierdy and I'm also one of the Child Protection Supervisors. I supervise intake and screening, adoption guardianship, family group decision-making, general child welfare, and our social worker one team.
Good morning, Sergeant Jamie Pearson. I work for Shaq the Police Department and I work very closely with child protection.
Thank you.
Good morning again. So I think one of the pieces that really stood out, especially as you read the narrative, is just in regards to the workforce shortages. I think we hear that all over the place and that is definitely hitting close to home. So I think if you could just talk, start us out by just talking a little bit about what you've done in regards to attraction, retention, and just kind of supporting daily operations in the midst of all the turnover challenges that you've seen.
Sure. We've done, we used to have a group of workers that were considered blended workers. They had a caseload of both assessments and case management. And, and we determined in the last year that we were going to try to work on workers focusing on one area of expertise. And so last November, we did a shift and have just workers doing only assessment and then workers doing only management. So I think that's been a little bit helpful in reducing the stress in the workforce. We obviously have more work to do and we're going to continue to work on retention. Trying to think about other things that we've done in the last year.
I guess I could add that in terms of like the recruitment and hiring, we really actually revamped our whole application process and looked at how we learned some things, how we rated the questions in terms of our candidate pool and really kind of seeking some diversity in the workforce. And we have seen some success with that. We have like refocused some of our interview questions real recently. Also even just trying to take a look at how are we looking at like who might come here and stay? Pretty challenging. Tried to do some research on that. There's not a ton within the interview process, but like trying to look at some of our reference questions and such to just look at who we're hiring and hoping that they'll make Scott County more their home.
I wonder if just as a follow-up to that, if we could look at the other side of it and not to minimize the, the turnover piece, I don't want to do that. But for the people who stay, like what keeps people doing the work?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I think if the workers who have been here a long time were here answering that question, they would speak to the flexibility. People are appreciating the hybrid, although we have moved to people being in the office more than not and just coming together as a group. They really lean on each other. They're very closely connected, strong teams in terms of people to lean on for support of the stressors. But it's that flexibility, I think, is a big piece of it for them, how, how they're able to have work-life balance. They're supported to take some time off and supported in supervision, I think, within the hard cases. I don't know if there's more you would want to say or...
Yeah, I was just going to speak to, sorry, speak to the same things that Julie said as far as the, the units really support each other. They have their tech streams that they have. When they've got difficult cases, they can bounce things off each other. They can receive support throughout the day and into the evenings when they're out on cases. You know, even if a worker's out on a case till eight o'clock, they can, you know, know that they can get support from their coworkers even at that time of the night. So I think it's super important to have those relationships in this hard work.
Thank you. With the restructure that you did last fall, have you had the opportunity to see kind of the pros and the cons of doing that? And would you continue to evolve that structure at all?
Good question. I mean, I think I've heard from workers that it's been helpful to not have two different areas of focus that kind of compete with each other all the time. So I, from workers' standpoint, they have said it's been helpful to be able to just work on one area of, of the work. And it probably has helped with connections amongst the teams as well, because we've got that, you know, really strong workers that are doing just assessments that support each other. And the same for the case managers. And before, we had that group of blended workers that I think felt, they felt like they had the brunt of the work because they were trying to do two different things at once. So I think I, I've heard that it's been helpful.
Yeah, one of the things we lost was one worker for one family, right? Like they would do the assessment and they would do the case management all the way to closer or to closure. But one of the things we kept was, for the most part, we have one supervisor for the family. So the families are still experiencing a different worker, but we have that supervisor, like oversight on the case. And I think that that's been really helpful in terms of consistency as we're looking at like the strengths within the family and also the worries and concerns and holding that through.
I have a couple of follow-up questions to both things that you've been talking about. First of all, on the turnover issue, is this something that's unique to Scott County or is it happening in all of the counties? And as people are leaving, are they going to another county? Or are they leaving the industry? Or what's happening in those? And then my second question was part of the restructuring, it mentioned that you eliminated the birth to five workers. So I was wondering who's doing that work now?
Yeah, well, so Trish and I lead the, the ongoing case management, like Metro Supervisors meeting. And what we hear from all the other counties, like we all say the same thing about this. And what we hear from all the other counties, like we all say the same thing about this. Everybody's experiencing the same sort of turnover and continual like hosting and interviewing and hiring. Not sure if there's more you'd want to say about that or share what you experienced from your?
Yes, the Metro Supervisors for intake and screening are also saying the same. They're running into the same issue as far as staff leaving and leaving child protection. And either going to another county or to just out of social services altogether. So hiring and retention is a common theme throughout the metro counties as well.
Yeah, I can't think of any in the last few years that have left Scott County child protection in our area to go to another county to work as a child protection worker. They are mostly leaving the field of child protection in general and going into like mental health services, therapy, school-based, social work, medical-based, social work, things like that. And I think, I mean, I think we can presume that is because of the, the hard work that child protection is and they're burned out. And the younger workforce is not as maybe focused on staying somewhere in general for a long period of time. That's kind of what we've heard from ER as well, that a lot of the younger workforce is wanting better and different and wants to move around a lot. So big, big job to work on that retention for this area of work.
So I was, I was curious, when I look at page number 10, so and on top of turnover, are you also experiencing an increase in caseloads? Is that, when it says screen reports in, in 2012, it was 400 and then up to 800 in, in 2018? So are you experiencing turnover and increase in work?
Well, I think the increase that we saw, I think it was 2015 with the Governor's Task Force, we saw an increase in number of reports that were coming into the agency, child protection reports that we were screening. And we saw a peak from the 2015. I think it peaked around 2018 and we've seen a slight decline. I believe some of the decline that we've seen in 2020, 21 is probably due to COVID. Kids were not in the classroom or in the schools. And so they weren't having that direct contact other than screen contact with many mandated reporters. And so there was a decrease in some of those reports. And we also, Churchill's a, a decrease as well. Perhaps a contributing factor may be that through the county and Shakki Midland Sioux Community, we had the interdepartmental agreement with the tribal community. So some decrease in number of reports there as well. So I really, the peak, and now we're starting to see decline. It's starting to level out at this point in time as far as number of reports that we are receiving. So it's just really hard to, but what has really influenced that? My concern is the COVID and not having the direct contact with mandated reporters.
Thank you. That was actually going to be my next question was on that, on page eight, that slide. It showed that the rate had come down in 2020. And I, I kind of made an assumption that as there was more stress on families due to the pandemic, that number was going to skyrocket up. So I was wondering what was causing the slight?
Right, yeah. I really, again, I think it had something to do with COVID and agreement. And it's just we're not being seen. Majority of our child protection reports are coming into the agency via mandated reporters.
So this could maybe be a false, that the number is actually much higher. Stress has, is happening impacting kids, but it's not seen.
I would have a similar question, I guess, with page nine, just when looking at by race and looking at the disparities. And it looks like we're seeing a decrease or at least the, the gap in between those served and those served have come down. And what would you attribute that to?
From an intake perspective, intake and screening, there's still a lot of work to be done in this area around disparities. But the, the county we're looking at, how can we, in our mandated reporter training that we provide, how can we address or have conversations around disparities? Really encouraging our reporters to, to be aware of their own biases. And then also, how can they perhaps intervene for services to a family before it gets to the point where it's a child protection matter? If you have worries or concerns, to address that with the family upfront and offer the resources, whether it's the Family Resource Center or if it's through the CAP Agency or some type of community-based program to really try and connect and, and get them the resources, the services they need before it becomes a child protection matter to, that upfront brokering for the families.
I'd, I'd like to ask a couple of questions about assessments and investigations. So if you look at page 11. So one of the first, my first question to Sergeant Pearson, can you talk about the kinds of, I'm assuming that you are not going out on every child protection case. Can you talk about the kinds of cases that you're going out on? And like what are you seeing today that is maybe different than pre-COVID?
Sure. So, you know, just like the intake process, well, I'm, I'm part of that as much as I can be. I try to log on and participate in the screenings and intake meetings in the mornings. So anything in Shakki, you know, then I have right away, I know it's coming. I'll know who's assigned to it and we can coordinate later whether I'm going to go out or whether one of my detectives is going to go out with the worker for an investigation. I will say, you know, there's cases that we go out on with the workers that aren't necessarily a criminal matter, but the worker would feel more comfortable having law enforcement present. So we go with them. It's kind of the, the nice working relationship that we have with this agency.
Okay.
As far as what kinds of things we go out on, you know, I've been in my role for three years. I was a detective for three years, years ago. Kind of seems to always be the same or similar types of things, whether it's limitations of sexual abuse, mom or dad or both are using drugs, supervision issues which aren't always criminal. So those are the three, I think, that really stand out to me. Physical abuse seems very consistent throughout.
Okay, okay, thanks. And then my other question on, on page 11 is if you look at the total number of assessments that are conducted against the number of cases that get opened, right? A small number of cases are, I mean, it doesn't feel small if you're the social worker, but, but a relatively small percentage of cases are getting open to case management. Can you talk about what that means for you? And, and, and does that mean that we're doing, that 500 plus of our assessments are for people that don't need services? Or what does that data tell you? Is that a clear question?
It is. I think so. I mean, I guess one thing that I want to say to begin with is that I, in Scott County, I think we do a really good job of doing really thorough assessments upfront. We are not, the workers are not a group that goes out just one time and is done unless that's what's really appropriate for the family. We look for every opportunity to use our 45 days to be building up safety within that family and assessing whether or not the family is going to be able to continue that safety response without the need for ongoing child protection services. And we would even consider erring on the side of like monitoring for 60 days versus like opening case management and starting a new relationship. And now that like two extra weeks that we needed turns into a month of building rapport and two or three months worth of services when it could have been a shorter term. So I guess I just want to point that piece out as well. I, I think I'd, I'd like to believe that we are always taking a look at this decision based on like the safety need for the family. And also when I look at this number, it, it has me pause to wonder like what are the times when it's been a more questionable decision? And if I don't have a worker to give that case to because of all the stuff done, am I, even though in the moment, I know I'm, I'm asking myself like, that doesn't matter. What does this family need? But like, am I still impacted by that is a question that comes to my mind when I look at that number.
Thanks, Julie. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know that I have anything to add other than our practice of signs of safety within those assessments really brings forward the ability for families to develop safety networks within those 45 days so that we can exit and they can continue to keep their children safe within their family unit and their supports. So I mean, I think that's a huge thing that we do here in Scott County to try to reduce, I guess, the need for case management. And like Julie spoke to, then the need to change to a different worker and develop a relationship and do more work that the family might not need.
Thanks.
I have a question on page 17 about the foster care placement moves. Just curious if you could talk about moves? Who, like who would initiate the move or what would be the reason for a move?
Yeah, I, you know, there's a lot of different reasons for moves. And I guess a lot of times it's looked at like it's placement instability and that that's a bad thing. And not all of the moves are, are a bad thing. Like many of the moves are planned. Maybe initially we didn't identify a relative and children were in a traditional Scott County foster care home. And then we identified a relative and we moved them. Or maybe the children were with a relative and we are not going to be successful with reunification. And now we've identified a different relative who's willing to be that permanency option for that child over the long haul. And so there, there can be those kinds of moves that happen too that are really planful by the agency and with the family. There are other times when, when it really is about, I think something Trish was saying was relatives think they can do it. And then despite our best efforts to support them in that, they really realize that they can't. And we have to, you know, hopefully find a different relative home for those children.
And there are times when we try it with a relative and that relative says they can't do it. They, they can't do it. And then we may have to go to a traditional home because there's no other relatives available. But we work really hard to keep that relative involved doing like informal respite care or visits or, you know, other things to help support that continued connection, even if the relative can't do the main day-to-day care.
Ask a family resource question. A lot of the data that we have in here looks a little bit more at like numbers and demographics, but you're talking about formalizing the FRC program evaluations. Can you talk a little bit more about like what that looks like and what data you'd like to capture moving forward?
Thank you. I think we're doing quite a bit in the evaluation process. We're working with a team from the University of Minnesota to look at some evaluation. We're also working with our own GIS system to look at what we can gather. And then we're also looking at the, an evaluation form out of Colorado, which is the FRC force. And we're trying to really gather like what are people coming to family resource centers for? What are they looking for? And are they getting what they need at those family resource centers? And in addition to that, we're looking at a family development program, which would be some of the families that are returning to the family resource center consistently to, to work with those families about increasing their own family's wellbeing to hopefully catch people that are in like moments of stress and working through those areas to prevent them from getting to child protection.
So you're looking at potentially then a, a different system to capture the data that you would need to get all, add all those elements?
Correct, yes. We're looking at a system that any individual that's working with families can enter some of that data and families' data in case planning into the system and then look at how those case plans are evaluated with the families.
I have a follow-up question on that. But how do people become aware of the family resource center? Is this by referral only or is it that try to make it open to the public? So anyone can go and, and, and take advantage of the service?
Family resource centers are open to the public?
Family resource centers are open to the public. And really it's just about getting that information out to schools, to families. We are seeing that word of mouth is probably the best way for family resource centers to be known to families. So a family will come in and say, you know, I heard from my friend or I heard from my neighbor or I heard from someone that was here. But then we're also looking at advertising with, and marketing that information to schools and to families and working directly with case managers in the social service system and probation in those areas to get the information out to families.
So can I, I was going to save this question for later, but can, can I just ask you? So we have put a lot of investment into prevention services, right? Over the last couple of years, that, that is an area we have invested in. We also have a need to continue to support and operate high-quality child protection services. And can you talk about how like on your teams, like how do you think through that? Or I don't know, maybe Suzanne, you want to speak to that? But just how do you think about that balance of how do we maintain the mandated service piece that is really important for us to do well and invest in what we think will be ultimately a, a stronger outcome for our kids in our community?
Yeah, I think it's critical, Chris, as you talk about. I think Leslie has probably heard me say, in order to do prevention well, we have to do and support the backend of the system. And then so the child protection has to be supported well. I think that comes through adequately resourcing staffing. So as we think about the staff turnover, certainly we have had an overcomp position to help manage that so that we can continue to do strong practice, preserve the signs of safety work with families because we know we get the outcomes that we are looking for for kids and families. I think it comes through good supervision. And so how do we continue to provide the support at the supervisor level? But then as we talk about prevention, how, how do the two sort of intersect? And so supervisors have done some work even around onboarding. How are we connecting new, new workers to learn about and understand the role of prevention to help support their work in child protection? How can prevention help either lift the load for workers and/or help exit families from protection into more community-based services?
Do you mind if I just, you asked a question about the B25 and I just realized we didn't actually respond to that. And so I just wanted to say that like we're still serving those families. And a lot of times it's with the same, a lot of the same workers who had like that area of expertise. But, but it is now like spread out through all of our child protection case managers.
Yeah. Can we talk about court? So on page 21 is some data on the number of child protection cases and permanent petitions that are open to juvenile court. And so two questions really. One is I'm wondering about the impact of virtual court and how that has, what impact do you see on families going through the, the juvenile court process as a result of the remote court piece? So I'll ask that and then I'll come back to my second question.
Well, I think that the virtual court had a, a good outcome in the sense that more parents were able to participate. More parents came to court and were part of the process. When they have to come in person, it's harder to get there. And I think we saw an intake or an up increase in parents coming to court, which I think helped the process.
Yes. Any downsides to that virtual court process?
I think the downside to the, it sort of broke down relationships because we weren't all together collaborating like we should be. And so we didn't get as much time to talk with the other parties involved.
Okay.
I, I guess I would add that we heard at times that parents were reflecting that judges were making really big decisions in their lives and they had never met the judge.
judges were making really big decisions in their lives and they had never met the judge. You know, like you don't think of looking at somebody through a screen as really meeting them. And so I think that was hard for parents at times.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask about was just that there, there's some comments in the narrative about just the level of the adversarial nature of courts and adversarial process, but just that that has been a particularly difficult factor and a piece that you think may be impacting some of your staff turnover. And I, I don't want to dwell on that, but I'm just wondering if you have just some observations you could provide about like, is that a, is that attributable to a virtual court arrangement or is that just something different in our system?
I think it, the adversarial nature may have increased during COVID. I think we would all agree with that. I think it, it was there before COVID, but it might not have been happening as often. During COVID, like Deb mentioned, it, all those kind of like connection times before court when you would be working with the parent attorneys, guardian, and light, um, child attorney, where you'd just be connecting with everyone and kind of talking through, this is what we're going to talk about in court today, kind of get into a consensus. That is really hard to do in the virtual world, even if you do breakout rooms, it's just not the same. And especially for hearings that were like settlement conferences and things when you really are going back and forth and, you know, trying to come up with things to kind of please everyone a little bit, really, really hard to do in the virtual world. So I think we are happy that court is back in person for the most part. I think one other negative of the virtual court hearings during COVID was although parents were on the call or the Zoom hearing, they weren't always just doing that. Sometimes they were in the car, sometimes they were walking down the street in Minneapolis, sometimes they were in bed. Like, I mean, so yes, they logged on, but I don't know that they really got what they needed to out of those hearings.
Okay. And I'd just add before COVID, the one of the big settlement cases, we would, we would reserve a room and we'd all come together and sit around in a circle and have long discussions about, I think, settling. And those were so helpful. We didn't get to do that, you know, during COVID.
It's easier to be nicer to people when you are in the same room and to work cooperatively than if you're either on a Zoom call or if you're just emailing. Emailing, we've seen can be very, very rude, deliberately rude to the agency, even when the agency did nothing wrong. So there, there's just been a lot of difficult nature within the court aspect of these cases. And it's hopefully, like I said, hopefully now that we're more in person, that will reduce. But that was a huge factor for a worker burnout, satisfaction. Yeah, just getting through day-to-day business was difficult.
I'm gonna go back to workforce again. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Department of Human Services Commissioner Harpstead, and she asked a question on like systemically, if we could look to support a few positions or if they were to work with the Department of Employment Economic Development, what would that look like? What's, how systemically can DHS support some of our workforce shortages and challenges? And so maybe it's from like a, a training side, a certification side, a, or is it like a system improvement side when we see like the amount of paperwork that's there? And probably I'm leading your answer, so. But what ideas would you have from like a systemic, how can we help make this better?
Well, one idea would be to maybe have a whole different computer system than SSIS. It is a massive system that is, there has to be some way to make it easier on workers, but it's the amount of clicks that you have to do to get to a certain spot to enter information is unbelievable. I mean, just to look up information, you have to click, click, click into different screens and try to get in there. And it's just, and, and SSIS has been difficult to get working properly in the last year or maybe, maybe less than that. But there are times when workers spend, you know, a half an hour trying to get into SSIS to do their work and by that time they might need to leave and go on a home visit. So SSIS is a, a big factor. I think also the out-of-home placement plans, they are in general 15 pages in length for one child. So if you have a family where you've placed, you know, three to four children, each parent gets an out-of-home plan on each child and the other parent, and there might be more than one father involved because, you know, each child gets a plan and each parent gets a plan for that child. So the amount of paperwork is extraordinary and it, it's a lot of time, which would be better served, obviously, working directly with the parents and the children.
Yeah, I was gonna add, like if, if those case plans could get modified, shortened, they're a huge issue at the Court of Appeals right now and those are always contested issues. So those need to be revamped.
Well, and they're hard for, I mean, for us to understand all the things that go into them. So if you have a parent that might, you know, English might be their second language, I mean, all of that makes it more difficult. And some of the things in that, those case plans are not really necessary for the parent to know about. They're just things that have to be in there for DHS or for financial reasons. I guess I don't even know all the reasons. But that's a difficult process. We, we also, because we have parents that speak other languages, we've been running into the need to translate those documents and we just submitted one and it was over $3,000 to translate one out-of-home placement plan.
And I just want to add to that, like, so that's large, right? Several thousand dollars to do this case plan. And really, in terms of the information that the family wants to know, that worker can probably put it on a page or a page and a half for a few hundred dollars in a way that the family would completely understand. So it's just kind of ironic.
It is.
Just a quick question. So is this like a state database that you are required to use?
Yes.
Okay. So you, the county couldn't implement a different type of system? This is one you, okay, thank you.
Can I, can we turn to page 15 for a minute? So this is the number of children in out-of-home placement. This is, you know, we talk about this all the time, this data, partly because we know that placements can be difficult for children and families and partly because it's a big budget driver. Out-of-home placement is a big budget driver. And so hearing the challenges that you have had with staff and virtual court and just like, just the stress of having your teams work in person during a pandemic and just all those things, your data suggests that you're continuing to keep kids at home and out of placement. And I'm wondering, what are the things that you think are contributing to your ability to be successful in that area? In the midst of like the challenges?
Sure. I mean, I can speak to, I think I mentioned there are signs of safety practice and really working with families on their own solutions to solve the problem that's going on in their family. So I think we've, we've kind of come up with our own acronym called Safety Network Action Plans and we call them SNAP. But it's a way that we can work with families' networks to either, you know, come move into the family's home to kind of be the supervisor of the family to make sure safety is achieved. Or a parent might move out of the home and that reduces the need to do a placement. Or we might have, you know, networks coming in and just doing safety check-ins and that also can prevent placements. But those SNAP plans is basically where, it's not a formal placement, but we use the family's informal supports to try to keep safety and not need out-of-home placement. So that's a big factor, I think.
So informal supports, you talked about grandparents and neighbors and all those kinds of things. Yep. Well, so for example, it might look exactly like a placement in that like children could be staying with that relative. It's just not when, when Trish is saying it's not a formal or technically not a placement. It's, it's not, the agency doesn't have custody, right? And so therefore it isn't entered into SSIS as a placement. But I, if you were to, it'd be interesting to, to add up the number of children that are under a Safety Network Action Plan that actually has them residing separate from their parents. There's probably a number of children. So it's not, a, a Safety Network Action Plan can be like children are living together with their parents, you know, under the same roof, but it can also be where children are living separate from their parents, much like a placement without the agency having custody, just to clarify.
And I think too, the county, we've used family group decision-making to help in placement prevention now as well.
If we could just take a step back to page 21, just a general question. What is a permanency petition? So how does a, chips elevate to a permanency petition, petition? Are these two parallel tracks?
No, so you start off with a child protection petition and then if we can't, we have timelines that we have to work towards to reunify. And if we can't reunify within those timelines, then we will file a permanency petition to permanently place those kids with hopefully a relative by either a transfer of legal physical custody to that relative or by terminating the parent's parental rights. But it's the same, it's a different court file, but same family.
I just had one, oops, sorry. I just had one other question about the family's first legislation. And if somebody could speak to what kind of changes, like what should we all be paying attention to with regard to that federal legislative change?
Yeah, I think the family first work is a work in progress in terms of the state of Minnesota implementing. So I, one step in that progress is the state has submitted the first prevention plan to the federal government for approval. So that will hopefully be coming, but ultimately it is looking at how are we using evidence-based services to prevent kids from entering placement? So families have to be connected to determine, to, to be determined a candidate. So generally going to be involved in child protection, perhaps children's mental health. And then we could use approved services for placement prevention. And if we use the approved services, you could claim 50% reimbursement. Right now, there's two identified placement prevention services, which is, oh my gosh, I just, parents as, thank you, parents as teachers and motivational interviewing. I will say motivational interviewing is not, is not a service. And so it is, I think, from a county perspective, really difficult to understand how that would be, we can't refer for motivational interviewing. And so how we would actually be able to use that as a service is in question.
So at what point would the county start to, so we will no longer be able to recoup federal funds for out-of-home placement, but we will be able to recoup funds for prevention services? And is there a point where we start to experience financial penalty?
Well, I think we're already experiencing that. We've already lost, as of October 1st of 21, we've lost 4E reimbursement, federal 4E reimbursement for kids who go into congregate care, so shelter facilities, placements where multiple kids reside, not in a family. So that has already been lost and we've not yet established a system where we can draw down 4E reimbursement on prevention services. And the piece to remember with that is we still have to pay out on the prevention service, which is something that, right, we typically are billing insurance for most of those. And so 4E is the payer of last resort. So the question is really how much reimbursement or revenue will we generate from prevention? I think that's pretty unclear. And we're probably still six to 12 months away from having the system be built to support a reimbursement.
All right. Any last questions from the facilitators?
All right, then, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. Appreciate it. Commissioner Breckie, you want to go first?
Thank you, sure, I will.
You didn't see me look around the rest of the room first.
Thank you, everyone. I, I know it's, it's just really hard work. And just for the benefit of anyone watching or listening, when we talk about turnover, I just want to point out to the packet, in 2021, seven of 16 child protection staff resigned. 2022, already, six resignations.
Wow.
So it, we spent a lot of time talking about turnover, but if folks didn't have this in front of them, I think they're not even understanding how serious it, it was. So thank you to all of you who are still here. Thank you to the people who left. I know they did hard work too. Let me start with a positive. I, I, I agree, Cheryl, I agree with you about we're probably still seeing some effects of COVID, but I think, I, I look at those weekly reports and monthly reports so closely. I think 2022 is still looking good. So that maybe it's not all because of COVID. I, I think work that everybody's doing is hopefully influencing that. And I just hope and pray and continue to think we're, we're really on the right track. I know you do all every day more than me too. In my reports later, I'll talk about the AMC district meeting yesterday and the, the second highest priority at that district meeting voted on for AMC to work on is human services systems modernization, not a new thing that we're working on, but we're still continuing it. We hear it all the time and, and that's what we can do. We can't do the hard stuff you do, we can just do that kind of thing. But I've heard now in our budget meetings and again today about the plan, the out-of-home placement plan, and it seems like that's a recent change about how long and extreme it is? Or is it just, it, it's always been that way? Okay. That I'm wondering and probably looking more at Suzanne and Pam, if, if we don't have that, if that's not in like the AMC platform specifically, I know we have a deadline coming up to get that in there. Maybe commissioners should be better able to speak to that. I think today, all of you and at budget meetings talked about that could probably be done much less and it could be much useful if it wasn't 15 pages.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Breckie and Pam, I think you've been working with Perry, right? This is one of your top four is the 50% time they're spending on paperwork. So maybe Suzanne could talk to that.
Yeah, so it is, it is, the out-of-home placement plan is a concrete example of being too, too long, too cumbersome for families, for workers. So it is part of the conversations that I'm having with Perry. The data is difficult, so I'll be the first to say to, to ground the time workers are spending in paperwork is, is a challenge. It was in the Office of Legislative Auditor also who identified specifically
Yes.
the length of the plan, the cumbersome nature of the plan, and really makes recommendations to DHS that that needs to look different.
Good. And I just think calling it out from the general paperwork reduction systems, modernizations is, is important because it is such a concrete example. So thank you. Sergeant Pearson, thank you. Thank you for all you do as part of this work. I think sometimes we forget that. Is the relationship with the other police departments or the sheriff's office, if it's a township, the same as good? I assume all of our child protection reports aren't from Shakopee. We must have a few from other places too. Anybody can comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think our assessment and investigators especially really appreciate all of their law enforcement connections. The relationships are great. I, I, I watched the more senior investigators sort of bring in and like grow up the new investigators in understanding the value and the importance of those relationships and how to take time to, to continue those relationships. And we couldn't do this work without law enforcement. And so that's made known to investigators as they're getting started here. And what Jamie talked about in terms of law enforcement going out with us even when there isn't a crime for them to investigate, that is true, that's very true for Shakopee, it is true for all of the jurisdictions. If we are saying like, look, this report involved a gun, would you be willing to come with us? They're absolutely, sometimes they will be the ones to tell us, we don't want you going alone, we're gonna be there with you. So it's highly So it's highly valuable.
Wonderful, wonderful. I just think with, you know, three of the cities, and you have two of the cities who aren't represented here, something we maybe should be talking to our, our city partners about and just appreciating and making sure everybody understands that connection. So you being here reminded me of that today. And then I, I know my colleagues will have some questions, but I just have to say, thank you, congratulations, good work. We look at the data on 14, on 15, on page 19, this is all really, really good and important, and, you know, not, I mean, it saves us money, but saving lives also, literally saving lives and changing lives. So thank you for that work. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Breckie, for your thoughtful questions. Commissioner Beer?
Wow, that is really rough work, and I, I want to pay a compliment, I don't know if I need to look my county attorney to see if I can say this, what a group of beautiful souls doing really, really hard work. I mean, golly, so thanks for doing that. And it was interesting, so this, I don't know how to describe this work, is it sneated? It's, like, you do work that most of the world will never see, will never know, go about their business, worry about water levels on lakes, you know, important stuff. And you guys are going about, it's crazy, it's crazy. So thank you for doing that. And it was just, you know, we had trouble with the mics, and, and it popped up on the screen, you know, they're all so soft-spoken. And here's this soft-spoken army in the trenches, literally getting it done. I'm getting goosebumps. So thank you for doing that. I also can't help but wonder, I think on my, on my commissioner report, I have the last roundtable on housing, did we call it the last roundtable? I think we may have found our next roundtable series. How do we, how do we make this better? How do we make lives better? How do we make your lives better? How do we not have resignations by having other people come help do the work? Because we need help. That doesn't mean we're displacing you, just to be like super clear, we're not, not, in this day and age, you got to be super clear about that stuff. But how can we find others to come help and empty our foster care, or have a legitimate, definite respite place to go to put some of these kids? I, I see on page 15, yeah, the numbers are coming down, but golly, that's still a high number of kids that are in out-of-home placement. Like, the conditions that have to happen, I know this county is like, that's sort of a last result, resort, rather, and we want families first, we want stable homes, we want all those things, but to have to go in and remove, like, huh. So thanks for doing that work. We were at AMC, and we'll probably talk a little bit more about that, somebody had talked about, hey, we need to get our legislators in, everyone wants to do the ride-along with the cops, you know, the cops, you know, get our picture, you know, put it up on the website, that's cool, it's, you know, sexy, it's all those things. Hey, what about sitting, are they green screens or orange screens, or are they actually computers, like this, this SIS, whatever it is? L M O P? Anyway, it's, it's old, right, it's old. Like, sitting some of these folks down in front of this, which maybe we've tried, but we've got some maybe new blood coming perhaps, to say, this is, when you make a decision in some big white building, and it impacts us, and it impacts our residents, like, you need to know this stuff. Seeing is believing, so I think we need to get, assuming Ben may or may not win, but get someone like Ben Deneer that's new, and, and like, really see what you have to deal with to protect society. What else do I want to say? The data entry thing was a big deal, 45 to 50%, I mean, I'd rather have bamboo shoved in my fingernails, that sounds more appealing. Like, that just sounds gross to me. So whatever we can do, that was a topic, and I just hope there's courage in that room and beyond to actually make that happen, and not just, hey, it's our big priority, so what? Some of the big priorities have taken 20 years, like, like, let's get serious about moving some of this stuff. I think maybe I will leave it, let me check my notes, I'll leave it maybe there for now, but I'd really love to see this potentially being an area of, of our next, like, how do we make this better, and like, what is Scott County doing that foster system's empty? Because I know there are groups out there that want to do that, so, again, thank you for your hard work, it's, it's, honestly, it's mind-boggling to me that you're sitting here with smiles on your faces, doing this kind of work. I mean, good for you guys, that's clearly a calling, and nothing short of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beer. Mr. Ulrich, your light screen, you indicate.
I keep my light on all the time, so, but I, I guess what I'm, as I look at these, you know, what is not working section here, I'm wondering, what is the strategy to correct some of these, and how can we help? What do we need to be doing in each of these, I don't need to call them up, I think 45 to 55% of time of documenting, and it's very troubling, and, I mean, how, how do we, how do we solve some of these things that aren't working? I, I mean, we, we have to be aggressive, we have to work together on figuring out how to solve these. So let us know what we can do, what we need to do with our legislators, or where this, some of these requirements come from, but, yeah, want to help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Just a couple concluding comments from the chair, but one is a question. In the reports I'm looking at, I know we're talking about families, I think we talked about families in the old-fashioned, traditional sense, we assume a mom and a dad, but one of the things that concerns me, and it has to do with some of my previous boardwork with some ministry-type things that dealt with families, is fatherlessness. You may not have the data, you don't have the data here, I'm just, would be curious, maybe a future board would be, in the situations you deal in, how many fatherless homes are, would you think be contributing factors to some of the turmoil that the kids are seeing, trying to live with? I know that's a real twitchy subject, but just, and I don't expect an answer today, but know that there are those of us that think about those things. If dads would just stay with their kids and their moms, how much, how much less work you would have to do, how much less strain it would be in society in general if dads were present and dads were actually engaged in what they should be doing at home? So just, I, I noticed that we don't talk a lot about that here, but I do hear from one of my friends who's spent his entire life in child protection and, and in legal enforcement of those things, that was one of his, he said, we're not allowed to talk about it, but just know that there are those of us that do think about that, and think about the impact that that collapsed in our culture over the last 15 years has had on the work that you have to do. Which leads me to my last comment. Commissioner Beer touched on it when he said, we all love to do groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings and build bridges and argue with people about how high the lake should be, yeah, and ditches, did you hear the ditch discussion a little bit ago? What you do is, because people don't behave themselves, things will come off the rails, real human things are having real human problems, and we're not angels, it's why we have to have corrections, it's why we have to have police officers and detectives. And I remember it really rocked me one day when I heard about the detective we had on our staff, who on behalf of the city police officers, police forces, did almost all of the work investigating child pornography, and he did that for eight years. I think, how does anybody's soul survive doing that work for eight years? And he finally said to the sheriff, I need a break. His replacement didn't last three months. That's how intense that stuff is. That's the stuff we don't get to see, we just know about, we hear about it from time to time. So that brings me to my comment, and I encourage you, word for you, you're doing some work that has to be really wrenching on your hearts and your very souls. I'm going to say it as a rhetorical question, but it's actually encouraging. How do you go to bed and unwind at night? How do you go home and unwind? How do you sleep? Are you doing okay? I would encourage you to find some way to encourage each other, to watch out for your hearts and your souls. And by your turnover rate, I see that some folks must exercise care for their soul by getting out of the business. Thank you for staying in it. If there's a way we can help you encourage voluntarily to watch out for your own hearts and your own souls, let us know. I've got one way that I'm already thinking of. In my entire political career, there's always been a small group of people who've prayed for me every Thursday morning, because I'm an elected official, I make big decisions, how much to assess a ditch, how big an interchange is going to be. But there are people behind the scenes like you that do real work, that may really need some care, spiritual, emotional care. I'm going to pass it on to the people who pray for me, or whoever pray for the staff that actually are in the trenches doing the work that actually impact people in really unfortunate and difficult situations like you have. That's it to my remarks, I guess. Thank you, Ms. Harder, for bringing that together. Any other concluding comments? Mr. Breckie, please.
Thank you, your, your words were momentous, and, and I hate to not just end there, but I do have to bring up on behalf of some of these folks that they are talking about dads, and some of the new work being done is in support of fathers through Together We Can and Family Resource Centers, and it's probably not at the point to come here, and we're not seeing the results yet, but, because you might not be here when they come back.
Probably won't.
I want you to know they are talking about it, and they're doing specific services and reaching out to, to fathers, so just wanted that to warm your soul.
Thank you for ending on a positive note like that, appreciate it very much. Ms. Harder, thank you for putting this together and for the presentation today, yeah.
Thank you, thank, we really appreciate the time and appreciate the chance to talk about work, so thanks.
With that, my colleagues, I'm going to declare like about a seven-minute recess, because I've had three cups of coffee, and while these people decompress the room, let's just take a moment, stand up, catch our breath, and then we'll get back into other stuff, okay? Recession. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order and move to seven, the consent agenda. These motions are routinely adopted in one vote because they're generally routine and/or have been embedded in a workshop setting, largely non-controversial, however, any member or staff member can ask to have one pulled for separate consideration should they so desire. 7.1, adopt resolution 2022-178, authorizing entering into a cooperative maintenance agreement with the City of Shakopee for the County Highway 15/16 signal system. 7.2, adopt resolution 2022-2221, approving amendment number two to the Minnesota Department of Health statewide health improvement program grant, that's for years three through five, it'll be supplemental funding. 7.3, adopt resolution 2022-223, authorizing final payment to Safety Signs LLC, that's for the 2022 County Highway Sign Replacement Project, excuse me. 7.4, adopt resolution 2022-233, delegating authority to the county administrator or they're designated to approve the registration of volunteers with the county. 7.5, adopt resolution 2022-335, approving a 2023 through 2027 public health mutual aid agreement. 7.6, adopt resolution 2022-237, approving amendment number one to the WIC program, that's Women's Infants and Children and Peer Breastfeeding Support Program, and that's a contract with Carver County. 7.7, adopt resolution 2022-238, approving a conditional use permit to establish a multiple tenant sales facility, that'll be within section 26 of Louisville Township. The applicants and property owners are William Savoda and Kathleen Savoboda. Let's see, applicants and property owners. 7.8, adopt resolution 2022-240, approving the application for need determination to expand day support services by Pro Act Incorporated. 7.9, adopt resolution 2022-241, approving attachment number two to the St. David's Master Agreement for Parents as Teachers, that's a home visit, home visiting program and those services. 7.10, adopt resolution 2022-242, authorizing a sixth amendment to an agreement with Tyler Technologies for High Resolution Street Level Imagery. 7.11, adopt resolution 2022-243, authorizing entering into an agreement with Concrete Arts Incorporated, this will be for floor refinishing in the jail. 7.12, adopt, or approve payroll processing of personnel actions, and 7.13, approve a record of disbursements and approval claim, and approve claims. Colleagues, that's the consent agenda for the morning, anybody want to discuss any of them further, or what's your pleasure? Not all at once.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Breckie? And the motion will die for lack of a second in just a moment here. That's second by Commissioner Ulrich, thank you. Motion, and second, further discussion to those things, I would just like to note that the SHIP program seems to indicate we're going to hire two and a half more people, and I'm going to look at the administrator just to assure us that those are grant-funded positions and not permanent full-time. Thank you.
Those are grant-funded positions, and they are continuing to fund current employees. This is the annual renewal of that grant.
That grant, I see it went up by a little bit, too, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's why I was hesitant about seconding myself, so, but anyhow.
Good deal. All right, I think we're fully informed and ready to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails, the consent agenda is adopted. All right, now we come to probably our favorite part of the morning because it involves cookies and coffee, I believe.
Yes.
That would be recognizing Scott County retiree Michael Callahan, his twin brother Mark Callahan, to do the presentation and make some kindly comments. Mark, welcome to the committee.
Just about. Just to clarify, I'm Mark Callahan, county traffic engineer, and I'm not retiring, but Mike Callahan, a 26-year veteran highway maintenance worker for the county who has specialized in traffic signal and lighting operations and maintenance, has decided to retire, so Mike will be, his last day will be October 28th.
All right.
Mike's wife was intending to be here today, but it was a little bit too cold for her, so I think that was maybe her subtle hint to Mike that, now that you're available, she might want to travel south for the winter.
North.
North.
Good luck with that. Today's kind of a bittersweet day for me, obviously, we're happy for Mike and his family that they're going to be here very shortly, able to enjoy a much more relaxed lifestyle, but for us in the traffic office, we're losing a very valuable member of our team. Mike's got a ton of experience where it counts, at the ground level, kind of where the rubber meets the road, I know of a handful of situations where we've had traffic signal issues, signal poles getting twisted out of alignments, trucks hitting masked arms, where Mike was just able to make his contacts with Minnesota DOT or with a local contractor to get them out right away and make those repairs, whereas if we had to rely on those, rely on our own forces or whatever for materials, it may have been months. So Mike's experience and knowledge is going to be sorely missed. Regarding our brotherhood here, I remember my first day with the county, it's been a little over four years ago now. Of course, you meet a lot of people your first day, and you're just, I'm thinking in my mind, how am I going to remember this person or that person? And then Mike happened to introduce himself, and I thought to myself, well, that's one person I better not forget the name of. I happen to have a brother named Mike, so couldn't forget that. I prepared a short summary of Mike's work history with Mike helping me on that, and I'd just like to read that to you if I could.
Please.
Mike began his employment with Scott County on November 19, 1996, after having spent time working with cross-town sweeping, an ambulance manufacturer, and as a truck driver. He was hired as a maintenance worker and spent his first three years performing work to preserve the county road system. This work included crack filling, placing asphalt, replacing roadway pipe, maintaining ditch drainage, cutting trees and brush, and of course, plowing snow in the wintertime. In fact, Mike has been plowing County Road 42 since he started to work 26 years ago, and- and he claims to be able to know every crack, dip, bump, hoop detector and hand hole along that section of roadway.
How about the mailboxes?
We take them off.
They're becoming more, fewer and farther between now, so. In nineteen ninety-nine, the county maintenance department created a highway sign manufacturing shop and needed a volunteer to make and install new signs on the road system. Mike stepped up and assumed this position. He learned a new computerized software to develop specialized signs, such as the adopted highway signs we see throughout this county. He also learned the process of printing the signs using a plotter and placing the new sign layout onto an aluminum sheeting for field installation. As part of his new duties, Mike was assigned the responsibility for locating county underground buried utilities, making sure that those would not get hit by contractors digging in the area. This led, this locating assignment gradually led Mike into his most significant role working as a signal maintenance worker in the county. For the last fifteen years, Mike has become educated in the intricate operations of traffic signals and highway lighting and has applied his knowledge to resolve problems that arise almost daily in the field. In addition to responding to snow emergencies each winter, Mike has also been responding to routine and emergency signal issues at any time of the year. He's been relied upon to keep traffic moving efficiently and by ensuring traffic signals are operating as they should. In his role, one of Mike's most important contributions has been his effort over the years to standardize our traffic signal equipment that is used. Using components from a variety of manufacturers requires a signal maintenance worker to know the specific details of a great number of devices. But by reducing the components used to a few trusted sources, Mike and future maintenance workers can quickly become knowledgeable of each component and become more efficient at making needed repairs. Standardizing our signal equipment the county uses has also aided in reducing the amount and cost of replacement inventory we have to keep on hand. Again, Mike has been a dedicated servant to Scott County during his twenty-six years. He will be sorely missed. And I guess on behalf of our traffic office, the highway department, our transportation services division and Scott County as a whole, Mike, we wanna thank you for your dedicated service and wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Mike, would you like to make a few remarks or should we let Leslie?
I'm good.
You're good? A few others wanna make some comments. Leslie, would you make some? There you go.
I would, so it was about a little over twenty years ago, probably today, I was sitting with Mike working on my black book. And these were all of the individual meetings that I held with all of the public work staff in October of two thousand and two. And I had a series of questions that I went through and asked each one of them. And I will say that Mike was one of the most talkative of all of those there on his thoughts on public works. And over the past twenty years, I would continue to say that he has always been very supportive and positive in public works in Scott County. And I appreciated that attitude back then and I certainly appreciate it today as I've continued to chat with him. But one of the things he talked about was seeing himself in three to five years and his career goals. And it was all about signing and software and improving our sign system. I think Mark already hit on some of that, so I think that was a big part of what he wanted to accomplish. He even went from there into some of the signal work and helping there with some of the maintenance. It was always about continuing to grow. He talked about just-in-time signs versus sitting there and having a whole bunch in stock, which you wouldn't evidently always have to need. He talked about safety and better tailgate meetings and wanting to have safety as the priority for everybody that was working in the highway department at that point. And so as I look back at this, it brings back, one, some really good memories for me, but two, thank you for your service, your conscientiousness, your positive attitude and what you were doing out there. And just wish the best for you and your wife as you move forward here into retirement. So thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Other comments, Tony?
I gotta step up here. So I want to reiterate all the great things that were just said between Mark and Leslie. But I do wanna talk about one event that I had, so after I'd been here a while and I've known Mike the whole time since I've been here, and he was pumping me, well, you gotta come out for a snow event. So finally, finally I went out and I will tell you, it was very impressive. So Forty-two, he's lived his whole career and that's been his route. And to see it firsthand and to sit in the truck, first off, if you've ever looked in or sat in a truck, it's an intimidating piece of machinery. And these guys handle it with ease, they really do, and Mike is right there as well. And so to see how they gang plow, you know, multiple plows out there clearing a road like Forty-two, you know, our highest-volume roadway, was really impressive. And the whole time, Mike was so proud of explaining what they do, how they do it. And I'll never forget that day being out there with a few hours with him in the truck itself, so. Likewise, I wanna wish Mike the best, well-deserved retirement, so, thank you.
Good deal. Lisa?
I agree with all the things that have been said about Mike. Mike and I, over the years, prior to me becoming in the position that I was in, I've had candid conversations about what we needed to do, what we needed to fix, and we've continued to have those conversations. He's been a very valued employee. And I, unlike Tony, once followed him because I knew that the best way for me to get home was to go on County Road Forty-two during a snowstorm. So thank you for the good one. We are gonna miss you, Mike.
Good deal. Now, there is a plaque to be presented here somewhere.
Yeah, that's just what I was gonna say here as Lisa was walking up. We need to get a plaque and then a picture with the board.
And a picture, yep, and we'll do that.
Here's the plaque. So it says, I'll just read it to you, presented by Mike Callahan and appreciate appreciation for your service to Scott County government, November nineteen, nineteen ninety-six to October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. So Mike, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Good deal. The board, let's gather down there and. Should we stand way over here?
You can.
Yeah, do we have to have another recess?
Yes.
Okay, another ten-minute recess to be done in the hall and.
Having beer with Jeff.
Call the meeting back to order, thank you for your forbearance. Let's bring us to nine point one on our agenda, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-nine. I think our friend Barb Dahl is going to make this presentation, explain the request.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you. I appreciate your patience as it, like, for whatever reason, I have PowerPoints that seem to break, like, the board equipment. And then following a really great employee with a good snack is always challenging, especially to talk about DHS. But anyway, so thank you for your patience today. And we wanted to bring forward this grant proposal idea that is a slight variation on what we currently do with our school-linked mental health. And in addition to that, it is a request for some additional staff, but it would be grant-funded positions along with insurance-funded, so next slide, JJ. So what we wanna do is just give you a little bit of background on this funding, how it ties to the CCBHC, which is the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic that we've been talking about and how that is gonna have an enhanced rate for some of our medical assistance services. We wanna talk about the outcomes and the impact, kind of why us, why now? Should we be looking at this? Fiscal impact, and then get into a little bit more detail on the budget. Next slide. So this is put forward by the Department of Human Services. So back in two thousand and one, the legislature directed the Department of Human Services to use their substance abuse block grant to provide funding to provide substance abuse services within the school setting. They really wanted to emphasize a strong tie to our school-linked mental health providers. And as you know, we currently provide school-linked mental health services in about thirty-six schools across five of our school districts and southwest metro. And I think as Ryan Lager had, I think most of you are at scale on Friday, and Ryan Lager had talked about who's superintendent of Bell Plain. He referenced Dr. Raditz and how she had reached out to him about this and just appreciated the partnership and the strong collaboration that we've had. I think for over fifteen years, we've been providing school-linked mental health services through the DHS grant money. This would be an enhancement to that service. And really, it's that tie, that stability, that was really called out within the proposal that had us look at this as an opportunity. In addition to that, this funding is gonna be for thirty-nine months. It's a little bit longer than what we typically see for a grant proposal period. And so if we're looking to move towards the CCBHC opportunity, we thought it was worthwhile to throw our hat in the ring as we look to improve outcomes and hopefully put ourselves in a better fiscal position as we move forward. Next slide. So just a reminder, on the CCBHC, this again is the enhanced rate where we're really hoping that we're gonna see in, hopefully as soon as two thousand and twenty-four, we'll start to see a significant impact in a positive way on our county levy. But with that, you had all approved back in June, our ability to get a two forty-five G or substance abuse license. Because we have to do a comprehensive assessment, is what it's called, and we're gonna be looking at both chemical use and mental health use when we have people that enter and start working with the mental health center. And so since we're gonna be looking at those services from both perspectives and we know that oftentimes our substance use and mental health are co-occurring disorders, we thought it was worthwhile to examine this within our school setting because it does create another funding source. And if we're moving in this direction and we can pick up additional funding and we can serve more people in a better way, that's probably something we should consider. JJ, next slide. So again, just looking at the outcome and impacts, we wanna look at seamless service. So this again allows us to do the comprehensive assessment. It allows us to serve kids if they present with chemical use or with mental health use. Right now, we're currently seeing kids that if they present with mental health, they're getting referred to our staff. They could get referred now if they are presenting with chemical use concerns as well. Overall, we're hoping to see improved outcomes. We currently, right now, evaluate that based on the global assessment of functioning with basically looks at wellness and how they're doing and if they have improved or reduced symptoms. And so we'll continue to monitor that. There's also, there's actually quite a few outcomes that we'll be monitoring through this grant, but those that kind of tie back to things that we've talked about with community indicators would be increased school attendance and high school completion. In addition to that, as we talked about previously, wanted to look at how this is gonna help support additional revenue source. So adding this funding stream in would help to support that and then hope to decrease the levy even as soon as twenty twenty-three with this funding. And we'll look at that in a little bit detail here, next slide. So the budget that we're looking to propose, this would have four LADCs. LADC is a Licensed Alcohol and Drug Counselor. We currently have two on staff. This would be adding two additional. We would also, I think I've got one social worker one in here. It would actually be a new point five social worker one. And that would be somebody that would be helping to coordinate some of the assessments. It would be to coordinate some of the scheduling and referral information. And then we have an existing supervisor that I think we can allocate to this source and this funding source for work. So again, a potential to help support some of our levy reduction efforts. We've got benefits attached to this. Equipment, we'd be looking to purchase new equipment off this grant and support ongoing medical, electronic medical records. Co-pays, I didn't highlight that one as a potential levy reduction, but really, that is, for anybody that has a deductible or co-pay they can't meet, this grant could potentially pay for that, which really ultimately goes to kind of offset any of our staffing costs that might not get picked up through insurance or through this grant. We also would have mileage of the program expenses and evidence-based training. That was an area that, I guess, one thing backing up to the CCBHC, last spring, we had submitted a grant, a federal implementation grant that was approved. We had a board workshop back in May regarding that submission. And we were not recipients of that grant funding, but we were hoping with some of these positions that we've outlined here and the indirect cost, that this could be a way to leverage some of that money that we were hoping to pick up as we look to ramp up those CCBHC efforts. So that's the background and the summary, and I would take any questions that you have.
Barbara, as we're looking at this last page with the total of the grant applications, nine ninety-six and change. Are you, is, some of it's highlighted in yellow, just to be clear. That is what could come off of the levity, levy next, okay?
That, well, so that's the, one thing to note is that that nine ninety-six is for the thirty-nine months. So the, like, the eighty-seven thousand, that would be spread over the thirty-nine months, not just for next year. Correct, yep.
Thank you. Questions for Barb, Commissioner Beer?
I just need to clarify, the CC LMNP, that's the one where it's too good to be true originally, but we've vetted.
And I actually talked to Steve Jones yesterday and he said, I feel really bad that I ever said that. He's like, it's just good all on its own, that's what he said.
That's how I, that's, I get it, I'll make sure I talk to him when I see him. Because we've vetted, we have vetted it, I say it kind of in.
We vetted it, and Steve and I actually vetted it again yesterday morning to look at how this could potentially look to impact the levy in a positive way in out-years.
Yeah, so that's the program. We still feel very good and confident that it's a way to recapture what we should.
Really do, and I think if anything, the federal grant proposal did, I say, I think it actually, for me, underscored that this is the direction people are going that are providing mental health services. There was a tremendous amount of proposals that were submitted at the federal level. And if you wanna pay for services regarding mental health services, it makes no sense to not look at an enhanced rate.
And Steve, if you are watching or listening, you are off the hook. I appreciate your candid comments wherever you may be. Thank you.
Further questions, comments, Mr. Beer, Brackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Barb. Remind me, what's the timeline for knowing when we'll receive this grant?
This grant, we should know by the end of the year. This is to start January first.
Okay, so it starts January first, we'd know by the end of the year, maybe, but probably not by December eighth.
Yeah.
Or whatever our date is.
The Behavioral Health Division at DHS that'll be making the decisions.
Okay, and then maybe, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, there'd be revenue coming in if we were doing this too, because we'd be billing to insurance.
Right, yes, exactly.
And do we have a thought on amount?
Well, so typically what we use for an estimate is seventy-five percent of a staff person for the Mental Health Center can typically cover insurance or can come through insurance. And then we'd like to see in addition the twenty-five percent get picked up through this along with those positions that we can't bill for, like the supervisors, where we're saying half of their position would be fully charged to this grant. And you bring up a really good point, though, because once we get the CCBHC designation, then we can use this as an opportunity where we don't have people that are covered under medical assistance, but we would be getting the enhanced rate for any individuals. So it, again, it's that ramping up to the CCBHC and helping us get prepared to have that in place.
Commissioner Wolf, Attorney General.
So January first to twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
Yes, yep.
Is that, is that more like forty-two months or am I doing something wrong here?
Did I add wrong?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Okay.
I, well, I think that's.
What? Oh, so it is thirty, okay, so it would go through Marches, okay, okay, got it.
Yeah, you're probably right, I'm forty-two, you're close.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I just, I'm just looking at like, okay, that's fine.
Yep.
But I think the resolution would still stand in spite of the forty two, thirty nine question regarding. Further questions, comments? The chair will entertain a motion if that's your decision or board.
So moved.
Commissioner Wolf.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Breckie. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Do we fully understand the resolution and the grant permission, so on and so forth? I think we do. Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails. Resolution two thirty nine is adopted. Let's move to ten point one. We're going to consider resolution twenty twenty two dash two two nine for a possibility of environmental assessment worksheet for our friends at Valley Paving. Who's going to tee this up? This Brad and Marty or? Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Jesse Kurzinski. I'm with Scott County Varmannel.
Jesse.
Kurzinski.
Okay, we'll just call you Jesse.
That's better. So today I'm here to give you a short presentation on the Valley Paving Standing Gravel Mining EAW. Next slide, please.
And thank you for giving us hard copies also. That's, helps if we can make notes right on if we need to.
So more specifically, I'm here to request the board approval and the completion of the environmental assessment worksheet by determining the need for an environmental impact statement or the EIS.
Okay.
So I'll just, before I get into the project, just want to give you an EAW kind of update in case it's not fresh in your brains. EAWs themselves are not a permit, so it's just a, it's a technical document put together to assess possible significant environmental impacts from a proposed project. And then ultimately, the complete EAW is used as a reference tool for permitting when that step comes. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to read this, but in case you wanted to inform yourself, you can read it yourself, but this is the definition from the Environmental Quality Board of an EAW and its process. They are the ones who set the thresholds for the mandatory EAW requirements for projects. Next slide, please. So here are the contents of an EAW. Again, I'm not going to read through all of these, but kind of the important one, since this was a mining EAW, we looked at land use, water resources, and then given the area of this project, key potential effects were looked at as well. Next slide, please. So quick, the actual steps of the EAW. So a project proposer comes in with data and information, submits that to the RGU. In this case, Scott County is the RGU. They review the information put together with the project proposer, kind of commenting back and forth to compose the technical document of the EAW. So ultimately, the RGU feels that it's adequate and is put forth through a public comment period and is published with the Environmental Quality Board and sent off to the state agencies for their review as well. And then we publish it on our website, and we put together a newspaper article saying that it is available for public comment and review. For an EAW, there's a thirty day comment period. And then after that comment period is completed, the RGU, or Scott County in this case, takes into account any comments they received and determines if any of them were met environmental threshold that would either need to be addressed within the document or the next step would be to determine if further studies would be needed, the EIS step, if any significant comments were brought before through the comment period.
And Jesse, have we run through the thirty day comment period?
Yes. So now I'll get to the actual project itself. We'll go to the next slide. So Valley Paving, this is just, this figure just shows the location, the general location of the project. So we're east of one sixty nine, covers both Bell Plain Township and Signalance Township. The Bell Plain Township section is actually within the city of Bell Plain Annexation Area. As you can see here, there's a current mine limit and a proposed mine limit on this figure. So actually, in two thousand and eighteen, Valley Paving was permitted for a sand gravel mine within just the Bell Plain Township area. And that was in two thousand and eighteen. Like I said, it was about twenty seven acres originally, and it was not proposed mining into the groundwater. If you want to go to the next slide. Now, the expansion is the, the EAW is covering this, excuse me, proposed expansion, bringing the total acreage up to about ninety acres, as well as expanding the max mining depth up to twenty five feet into the water table. So deposits here are unconsolidated deposits, Glacial River Terrace. So across the site, still bedrock will remain about twenty to fifty feet below their max mining limits. As part of the project, there's no de-watering proposed, but however, since they aren't mining into the groundwater, there will still be groundwater monitoring required. So end use, part of the reclamation plan, excuse me, includes leaving the annexation area for the city, developable and buildable. So ultimately, they'll have to reclaim the elevation of the ground back up to, I think, three feet above the water table, just to ensure that that area can be served by city sewer water. And then there's also a future county road corridor through the project area, connecting County Route two three hundred and sixty six. And that will have similar backfill requirements to make sure that it's developable, buildable through their reclamation plan as part of the county IUP. So if we can go to the next slide, please.
Jesse, before you, oh, here again. Would you point at where the old truck stop is? I'm a town guy, and I'm just trying to, is it right on the northwest corner?
Right on the northwest corner, there was a, I believe.
Old truck stop was right there. Oh, okay, I know right where you, no, I know what you mean. Okay, good deal, thanks.
So this slide just kind of covers nearby land use. So as you can see, it's kind of a, based on the deposits, it's kind of a hotbed for active mining right now. There's this proposed mine, there's the existing mine, there's a mine immediately adjacent to the west, and there's also a mine to the northeast. And that scattered amongst, amongst these mines are some agricultural and some residential use. Next slide, please. So this map is showing groundwater elevations, and it's just depicting the direction the water flows. So across the site, we're flowing northwest to the river. And then also, you can see, if you look closely, there's where their monitoring wells would be located as a part of their monitoring plant. And then those are all downstream. So any contamination that could happen would be caught in their downstream monitoring wells as part of their monitoring plant. Next slide, please. This is just kind of a zoomed in aerial of the current conditions. And then we also have the county road corridor overlaid, so you can kind of see how that interacts with the property area. Here we have the existing mine is kind of the purple dashes, and then the proposed expansion is the black dashes. And how that comes to their, the mining borders, and then there's the road access of how they get to the actual mine pit. Next slide, please. So this shows kind of the same space, but then this is the end use plan, the reclamation plan. So after mining is complete, we'll see this plan followed as it would be submitted to the IUP. We have about a ten acre open water body feature there on the north St. Lawrence Township side, and then as well as the road corridor will stay there as long as that's still the proposed plan with some sloping towards their edges. And then the south half in Bell Plain Township area would be reclaimed, like I mentioned before, up above the water table, so a buildable, developable state. And then right to the west is another mine, and they actually already have an agreement in place so that reclamation between the two mines would be the same, so you wouldn't be left with this weird hump in the middle.
One of my burning questions is the reclamation plan being coordinated between these different mines. Sounds like a good plan. Thanks.
Next slide, please. So the EAW was completed for the proposed expansion, and it was published on August thirtieth. Through, during the thirty day comment period, we had three state agencies comment, DNMR Met Council and the city of Bell Plain, as well as three residents commented. Next slide, please. So comments of concern, reclamation mainly from the city, they just have concerns and want to make sure that their annexation area is reclaimed to what they need in the future to allow for their city services to be installed there. And then as part of their reclamation plan, there's some backfill requirements that will be agreed upon by both city and county staff. And then also some settling monitoring to ensure that that reclamation is stable in the future, buildable. That's okay. There was also a meeting just about a month ago between city and county, just to talk over those type of backfill specifications and requirements that we'd be looking for when we're putting it into the permit. And then there was also a kind of information meeting put together for, just kind of put together a scope of work to see if there should be a road design for that corridor. And then the other comments who are groundwater concerns, those are mainly from the residents nearby. So the EAW itself didn't identify any impacts to groundwater. However, because they will be mining into the groundwater, there is monitoring proposed and will be required as part of the permit. And then also a reclamation, sorry, a mitigation plan also will be required in case any impacts do happen that are not necessarily expected. From one of the comments was the neighbor meeting to the northwest there. He has just concerns about his well being shallow. So we had a call, a conversation, basically detailing what the monitoring plan, goes over what they'd be looking for, and then if there ever were an impact, what their mitigation plan would require, whether that's drinking water treatment at his house or well or something. Next slide, please. Nothing further for me. Our staff is recommending a negative declaration, the need for EIS and the completion of the EAW.
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Chair, so that, that lake there, you said that's going to be ten acres?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Or more, less, or?
Ten acres, totally, yes.
And how deep is that going to be?
So twenty five feet is their, is their max, max into the water table.
Twenty, but twenty five foot deep of a pond, is that what you?
Right, it'll be sloped outward, so that it won't be just a straight dive down.
That's going to be lakefront property.
Could be, yes.
Well, but somebody could put fish in there or something, is that, I don't know, right?
So yeah, that would be township's jurisdiction, so.
All right. More taxes.
Lakefront property in Bell Plain County. All right. Commissioner Breckie.
I just want to follow up with the Mr. Jerrison comment, because I talked to him and then had him call you guys. He's, he's good with, with what was described, out the mitigation, and you'll keep him apprised of the public hearing on the permit and all that. You all good there?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Breckie, yeah, we, I think the discussion was, was useful in just kind of understanding what exactly would be required from permitting and then going forward if issues arise, and yes, he'll be on the planning commission update.
Okay. And then the pond that will be left with reclamation and indicated that that's in township jurisdiction, had, we've had some issues with townships wanting to accept responsibility for drainage ponds. Is that being discussed now with the township?
The township did not comment having issues with, with the end use water body, no.
Before, and I know I'm, it's not the subject at hand, but before we get to the, the actual permit, let's make sure that, that they understand long-term responsibilities there, so we're not dealing with it after the fact. Thank you.
Would you consider ten acres and twenty five feet deep as draining or a stormwater pond that needs cleaned, or are you just thinking further down the road then?
I don't know. I don't know. I just think if, if there is a, a maintenance responsibility put on the jurisdiction, that they know that's coming.
Okay. Good observation. Further questions or comments? Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure in Commissioner Breckie's and my meetings with the city as well, that this alignment, this is a pretty important road we're talking through here, that we have worked out this alignment, that it is going to be graded in, and that will be a final requirement of this process, and it's an alignment that the county staff and the city township have all agreed to here that meets where we're headed with this highway.
Mr. Chair, yeah, is he, miss administrator, yeah, there's been multiple meetings, I think, with both the county and the city, and the project proposer have been included, and it's been voiced that that is the preferred alignment of the road. It was adjusted slightly, it was off, their first submit was off, so it's been, it's been submitted now as the, as the preferred alignment, and then that has been voiced through the city as well.
Leslie, my question, is this the future county road eight corridor that we've been talking about for twenty five years? Good, that's important that we get that pointed in the right direction down there, then.
Yeah, this alignment can do more to relieve some of other roads than probably any other alignment we've been talking about, and really supports the economies in those communities on the western side to make that connection to I thirty five. And so I'm hoping that Marty and Lisa and that you folks have worked together to make sure that's happening, so.
Good, thanks. Commissioner Beer.
Thank you. Just a quick clarification question. This plan follows everything that we've done before with past mining as far as water mitigation and who's monitoring that and mitigation plans and so, so on and so forth. This is nothing necessarily new, or is it? Or it's the same plans that we, and protections we've put in place for similar operations?
Sure. Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner Beer, yeah, Scott County has, has had past experiences with, with mining, and they have an existing mining operation now. So yeah, the IUP will take from other past experiences and follow similar monitoring and mitigation plans that will be required as part of this project as well, yes.
I'm looking over your shoulder at Kate. She was jumping up to say something, or no? Did you change your mind?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Jesse did a fine job answering the question. I just wanted to just kind of expand a little bit. It's our understanding that Bolton and Meek will have a scope of work soon to, for the county and the city to work on, I think probably this week. So correct, we are, that alignment is, this is a discussion that we're, we're confirming it's in place. Thank you.
Good, thanks for the clarification, Kate. Further questions or comments? I have just one regarding the wells. So you have this map here with proposed wells, existing wells, and topographical lines, eight hundred and eight feet, eight hundred and sixteen feet, et cetera. That's not the, the surface of the land there, that's more like a thousand feet above sea level, isn't it? What are these other numbers then?
That's a groundwater elevation map.
That's where you hit the groundwater?
Correct.
Eight sixteen, eight twelve, and it's going deeper, shallower as we go towards the river?
Correct, so it flows downhill towards the river.
Okay, and that'll still be, they'll be mining into that, but these wells around here, like Mr. Jurwison's drinking water, is that below the bedrock, or are they taking it out of that shallower aquifer there?
According to Mr. Jurwison, his well, it's not on the well index, so the information is not available. According to him, it's a shallow well, so he is, sorry, he has, he is pouring water from that unsold, that's shallow.
Open the shallow.
Sand and gravel.
All right, well, it is sand and gravel, that'll help filter it, so. Okay, that was my curiosity question, so. Colleagues, do we fully overstand the request here? And it's your pleasure. The chair will entertain a motion. And I think the motion is actually on our printed agenda, if you want to read the entire thing, so.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two two dash two two nine, approving the findings of fact and conclusion for the Valley Paving Mining Environmental Assessment Worksheet, EAW, a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement, BIS.
That's the motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? Commissioner Beer, why am I calling you beer today?
I don't know.
I don't know either.
It's not time for beer.
Yikes, spikes.
It is time for beer.
It must be.
No, I'm just ready to vote.
You're ready to vote, okay. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion prevails, and the resolution two two nine is adopted. Thank you for your presentation, Jesse. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
And thank you, colleagues. Okay, let's, we're going to recess here in a few moments for attorney client privilege. I'm looking at the clock. Commissioner Ulrich needs to leave at twelve thirty. And so let me look at Leslie or indoor or Lori. Is that going to be a lengthy meeting, or can we get the commissioner reports done before that meeting? Okay, then you're helping me know what to do, is without.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I've also submitted in writing my report.
Okay.
We all just submit them, is that what you're saying, again?
Well, we could, but what the chair was going to do is just to declare that we're going to go into recess for attorney-client, well, actually, um, it's labor negotiation strategies pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03. And we'll come back and take up our commissioner reports after the fact. But because of the pressing deadline for Commissioner Ulrich, his wisdom will be appreciated in these discussions. So, without objection, we'll declare us in recess for the purpose of labor negotiations. I'll call the meeting back to order. Leslie's not quite here, but I do know I need to make an announcement that we had a closed meeting to discuss labor negotiation strategies pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03. We, um, met for a whole half hour, 35 minutes. The meeting will be, the recording will be made public after negotiations are settled with our employees and their bargaining units. So, we're back in this, uh, regular session now. Item number 11, Agenda Committee Reports, Commissioner Updates, as usual, we'll start with Commissioner Brecky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our last board meeting was October 4th. After that, uh, meeting, we had, um, workshop and then also the Scott County Ditch 10 Landowners Meeting. October 5th, I went to the open house on the County Road 7869 Roundabout that we have programmed in the tip for, um, in a year or two. Mostly, um, very good feedback on that. A few residents who just, just, um, probably need to become happier about Roundabout. So, I think it's good to have the, the open house earlier and, and allow them to get used to the idea, learn about it, get questions answered, that type of thing. October 6th and 7th, um, I attended the Shaq Retreat virtually, I had a terrible cold and I didn't think it'd be good to go to the public health retreat, spreading germs. October 11th, the Minnesota Supreme Court was at Shakopee High School. They choose one high school a year and go he, actually hear, uh, an argument and do that. They filled auditorium with 1,000 kids to watch it, had it on the live stream. It was really good because I think even as an attorney, I don't think I really understood what the Minnesota Supreme Court did until I was, was well into law school and for, um, high school students to, um, hear it. And then the justices visited classrooms, really talked about it, it was, it was great.
Can you talk about what case they were hearing?
It was a, I, I wouldn't have chosen that case, but it was a case where it, it was based on if there's a defendant, um, who has to pay restitution, does the court have to, um, make a record of that defendant's ability to pay? And if they don't, and he can't, you know, how, so it's very technical. And I guess in some ways that was good because it really emphasized what the Supreme Court does. The Supreme Court decides very technical things that have wide, wide influence. So, um, I stayed awake through the whole thing. But it was very technical and very specific, which, which probably was a good illustration.
Glad you're there.
Yeah, that afternoon I spoke to a community leadership class. Also on October 11th, had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. She came to my house, I thought that was really nice. And then that evening CAP Agency Board Meeting. October 12th, had the second of the Corrections Work Group Meeting. That, there's, there's folks from, from Community Corrections, like we are DOC Counties, NCO Counties, really working on that, uh, common formula in our efforts, uh, for the legislature this year. October 12th, the MICA Board Meeting. Also on October 12th, the Scott County Historical Society Board Meeting. The new executive director has been hired, actually yesterday would have been his first day. His name is Bill Mercer. Um, he's had some fairly good experience all around the country, really coming in with some good enthusiasm and, um, you know, I think some wisdom to continue growing that organization. October 14th, attended the scale meeting virtually. I agree with other people who've said it, what a great panel. I think the superintendents did, it was wonderful. And it was really wonderful to hear so many of them talk about their connections with the county. It felt very integrated. October 14th was AMC Board Meeting. And then yesterday, October 17th, the AMC District 10 Fall Meeting, where I already announced prior that our district, District 10, chose, um, community supervision. And the work on that formula is the top priority and then the Human Services Systems Modernization, second priority. Of course, I'll, only one other district's met so far, so we've got to see how it all shakes down. But I, I think it'll be good to have the whole state focusing on those things. Worked the tax tent for the last hour, um, yesterday, it was a little cold and thankfully Greg Wagner just held on to the tent, so it didn't blow away. Um, this morning, had Scott County Ditch Board Meeting and then my monthly meeting with Pam Selvig, um, Health and Human Services Director. End of my report, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, one more thing, um, extended access in Jordan's been down for a bit. I have had some, um, contact by residents not understanding why it can't be fixed. And just so if anybody talks to you, it's, it's a part, we're waiting for a part. And in these days and ages, that's hard, you know, you have to have that part for the system insecurity, hoping in the next week or two to get that up. But on the good note, the use of extended access at Elko New Market, Market has increased and that just shows like people can go not too far away and get those services, so thank you.
To be clear, you're talking about the libraries?
Yes, sorry.
No, it's the libraries. Thank you, Commissioner Brecky, Mr. Wolf.
Sorry, both said. Oh, just sorry, I'm going to start over. So, I had the workshop on the 4th of October, the ditch meeting also after that. And in New Market Township that evening, they talked about a handicap ramp that they're going to put in. They had a few, uh, residents that weren't happy about a couple of things that, uh, were or were not happening, so. Then on the 5th of 69 and 78. Housing Roundtable was mentioned here on the 6th. Planning and zoning on the 10th, they had a couple of, uh, permits applied for and, uh, they moved those along. On the 12th, the MESB met, um, we did the review for, um, our MESB Administrator Jill Rohrhart and gave her a pretty glowing review, she does a great job there. That evening Cedar Lake Sewer Met, um, other than a couple of the same types of things that happened with, uh, people clogging things up. Sorry.
Flusshable, not flusshable.
Trumping up base or something, symbol. Anyhow, um, they're worried about the hookups for the camper cabins there, so, um, they contend if there's four camper cabins, they'll need four hookups and I don't know how many hookers, so I don't know, I, I still haven't looked into that. So, on the 13th, I-35 Solutions met, uh, talked about a few things. One of the conversations turned into the Renaissance Festival and a lot of traffic spilled onto other, uh, other roads. The SECB met after that, the Finance Committee. Elko and Market met after that. They, um, still would like to plan on, uh, doing something with the 35W or not 35W, just I-35 Bridge and County Road 2. And somehow or another getting that improved and, uh, I, you know, as was noted here, I think last, about two weeks ago, that there's a water bottling plant, um, that, you know, is applied for a permit to be out there. If they, if they end up going out there, that'll be a lot of traffic and that would be, uh, you know, that would be something to, um, you know, maybe help them move that, uh, that bridge work along. But I told them if that, that doesn't stick, then it might not be as easy, so hopefully that sticks. After that Spring Lake Township met, uh, they had, uh, just a couple of things going on there, some permits and some roads they're looking at repaving next year. The scale meeting that was mentioned, uh, prior late last night in their workshop talked about, um, parks and some, uh, they had some surveys and what people'd like to see, you know, they want more pickleball courts, uh. Tennis used to be a big thing, they got a few tennis courts, is that the big park down there up on the hills? You know, some people use intermittently. The, uh, the hockey club wants more hockey rinks over there, so, um, the tough part about it, you know, you never know when it's really going to become winter and when it freezes and, and it thorn and, you know, it's anyhow, that's a tough thing. Then last, also last night Credit River, they had, during the open forum, a number of people, uh, expressed their reservations about the new, uh, nearly 200 house development out there. And then this morning, the, uh, the ditch meeting. And that is my report, good chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolf, Commissioner Beer.
Thank you very much, on 10-4, good buddy, we had the workshop after the board meeting and the ditch, uh, ditch 10 Landowners Meeting. On the 5th, also attended the, uh, Roundy Open House on 69 and 78, I could only be there for about a half hour, so there was a few people there, mostly county folks, but, but the folks that were there were in favor of, uh, having that roundabout, so I must have missed the ones that needed to look kids Big, Big Ben kind of thing. Uh, on the 6th, had our, I believe it was our final, I think I got clarification, our final Housing Roundtable, which is leading to some action, which is amazing, um, because there really weren't that many roundtables and we got some community, um, congregations involved and we got some good things happening, nothing quite official, but close, so stay tuned. We're working on some, some information on that in short order. Uh, after that, met with one of our brims of, when we had our service, uh, what do we call it, our service budget, whatever those meetings were, we had a bunch of, um, that was kind of a new area for me. And so, I wanted to make sure I understood that, understood, stand it a little bit better, so I'm working on that, so. Paula, thanks for taking the time. On the 11th, met with our QC guru, Chris Harder, just to talk about roundtables, all things, uh, fun and interesting of how we can make this county a better place. Always good to spend time with her. On the 14th, scale meeting, I too thought that was a good panel. I, I, I guess I was, um, taken aback how I remember teachers were respected and had all kinds of authority. And a lot of the information that I heard from superintendents and, and others was that now they're sort of whipping posts and bashed on social media and, uh, you know, thought as less than and I just couldn't help but wonder what happened in those 40 or, it gets more than 40 years, uh, sort of rhetorical there. Something to be looked into because why did they not have the respect they deserve? I have my ideas, but I'll leave it at that. 17th, AMC District 10, that was, I sat in for the bearded one, I was not happy to get that call, they did not have lunch. So, is that why you called me to sit on that one?
Trudy's on to me.
So, I, I appreciate the call and was able to, to go to District 10 meeting, it was my first kind of AMC meeting. It was very interesting, uh, Commissioner Brecky talked about some of the, um, priorities that, that they, that district wants to see done. And part of my question or to the group was, so we have these priorities, we always have these priorities. And I get it, we're always going to have priorities and, and things to shoot from, but some things have been priorities for so long. Like, do we, the collective we, have the courage to really push this stuff forward and not just talk about it and be upset about it? So, we'll see what happens with that, so there's a chance I may be going to more AMC meetings, I don't know, we'll see. And then on the 18th, I guess that was today, Ditch Board prior to the board meeting, and I think that is all I will say for now, thank you very much.
And I should point out, uh, the colleagues know it, Commissioner Ulrich had a medical appointment he had to be at five minutes ago, so he will be absent for the rest of the proceedings today. He did submit his commissioner report in writing to JJ. Sure, JJ appreciates getting it in writing from us. The chairman's report on the 4th, of course, it's been mentioned, the workshop and the, uh, landowner presentation for the ditch board. Very fascinating, I sit and listen to him talk about that and I put in mind, uh, Mark Twain's old saying, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting about, so it seemed to be wise after all these years, it's still true. On the 6th, um, uh, the housing meeting has been referenced at our friends River Valley Church, who threw a little breakfast for us and, uh, it was a good discussion and really did my soul good to see all the people in the faith community stepping forward and, and asking how they could help in practical ways and actually put heads on pillows, good stuff. On the 11th, privileged to have breakfast with the county administrator and just catch up on things and keep our finger on the pulse of, of what's happening here at the courthouse and government center. The 14th, the scale meeting over at the link at, uh, McGawcunning Community. On the 17th yesterday, I've got to tend the groundbreaking out at, um, Canterbury Southwest Crossing, I think is what they call it. It's Kevin O'Brien, uh, Greystone's, uh, little project there, uh, building a new facility for Badger Hill and I think Bravies, Bravies is how you say it, Bravis, uh, the Mexican restaurant. Quite a production and going to be quite a significant, uh, development out there. Continuing to flesh out, uh, all the work that we, um, kind of partnered with the city of Shakopee on, uh, with their Tiff District and things like that, new streets, new roads, new buildings, stuff breaking out all over out there. And of course, this morning, we had the ditch board meeting, uh, to make that value determination or, uh, do the assessments for the improvements on the ditch, maintenance of the ditch 10. And that's my report, let's turn to Leslie and see administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I do want to echo Commissioner Brecky on the Supreme Court, that was very interesting that morning at the high school. And the questions that the students asked after they got a chance to interact with the, uh, with judges, very thoughtful, very educational on, um, people especially that had interest in pursuing, you know, that area of, of, of education as they leave high school. We should be very proud of those kids, they did a nice job that day. Quick update, Gary B., I thought you might want to hear, rang the bell last week. There were about 10 of us there to celebrate that with him. The Highway Department did a very nice job, Lori and I were there. He looked really, really, really good, um, far better than I imagined. And so, keep him in your prayers, he asked for, um, but he looked good that day.
Great.
Quick update on the HHW, the Household Hazardous Waste Building. As we know, right, we had the alarm where the fire prevention came down. It caused some damage that had to be repaired. Since the building was shut down, we took advantage of replacing the floor, which was scheduled for two years. It was cracked concrete, but it was two years out, so we did it at the same time. We are waiting though on a panel for the alarm system. So, again, we are waiting for a piece of equipment to be able to get that building and that facility back up and open. We do have Lisa and Kate posting on Facebook and keeping people alerted that it is still shut down. But I, I don't have a date to give you yet, it's kind of like the library, we're waiting for a piece of equipment. Elections, we've had 6,842 ballots requested and so far we have accepted 25, 2,541 of them have been accepted here upon return. So, that's the elections update. I did ask the city administrators yesterday how it was going at their facilities and they just kind of said slow and steady, nothing over impactful, but people were, were showing up to vote. Good news is County Highway 27, uh, north of County Highway 21, will open Saturday in Credit River Township up towards Savage. So, that'll be a big improvement, an important connection there.
Yes.
The trail, I believe, on the west side will still not be completed until next year because there's still a, the gas line or something that has to be run in. The commissioner and Wolf and I were alerted of at our last meeting with Credit River. That will be done next spring and that work completed, so we're not going to go in and pave it and then have to rip that up. And that'll be, you know, added and cleanup work that needs to be done as you finalize a highway project. But that is a, a major opening here next Saturday. We also have a workshop, right, following up on this, we have an update on the Shakopee Academy and then the resident survey. And then finally, the county attorney did ask me to pass on that there's a, no need to adjourn for attorney-client session.
Yep, I was just going to make that announcement. Other questions or comments regarding our reports being done? Before we accept the motion to adjourn, I just want to note that we will be meeting in a workshop setting. We're going to receive updates on the Shakopee Academies and on the resident survey. Are we going to do that in this room or move next door, next door for that? Okay, members.
Motion to adjourn.
There it is, and there's a second. Discussion, I don't hear any, let's vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion prevails, we are adjourned.